Thank you. It is 7:01.
It is.
Yeah, we're gonna stop chewing the fat. And I'd like to welcome everybody.
Hi, Priscilla.
All right.
The Catana-Carla Board of Selectmen, soon to be, hopefully, Select Board, Tuesday, January 28th, 2020 meeting. Tonight's agenda will be community input, discussion of possible vote on joining Bedford-Lexington Veterans District. At 7:30, discussion on Wheel Obrator Solid Waste Renewal Proposal. At 8:00, 2020 Town Meeting Warrant Article Presentations. At 9 o'clock, Town Government Organization and Policy Bylaw Review. 9:30 Appointments and Resignations. 9:40 Town Administrator's Report. 9:50 The Liaison Reports. 10 o'clock Approval of Minutes. And at 10:05, all things, God willing, adjournment. Sometimes I do take things out of order, but I try to start items. I try not to start items late. I might take them early, but I won't start them late. There we go. So I see no discussion, no community input tonight. And I guess I just want to remind people that we do invite community input to our meetings. If you have things that you want to, if you've reviewed our agendas and there's something that you would like to tell us about these agenda items before we get to our discussions. We can't discuss them with you, but we do like to get the information so that we have that information when we get around to our discussions. Or if there's something that is bothering you and you think we should, that's not on the agenda that you think we should be discussing, that's a good place to bring it forward to us so that we can consider putting them on a future agenda. All right. We're going to start the discussion of the possible vote on joining the Bedford-Lexington Veterans District. Tim, you wanna fill us in?
Sure. Sure. In your packet, you've got a proposed amendment to the, I think it's the Lexington-Bedford District. That's how it's titled, actually. But an amendment that would allow Carlyle to join with Lexington and Bedford in a Veterans District. Well, you'll remember backing up slightly, Ken Buffam, our Veterans Agent, passed away last summer. And we have been looking for a way to replace Ken's services. Ken worked for very, you know, short money. It was $1,500. Whether we had any Veterans cases or not, we found that hiring our own employee would be prohibitively expensive and not as efficient, I think, as being part of a district with two other communities. We looked at Lexington, Bedford, and Acton, Boxborough. It turns out that it would be approximately, the administrative piece of it would be about $9,000 or $10,000 a year to be part of Bedford-Lexington. And it would be about $15,000 a year to be part of the Acton-Boxborough District. This is, aside from the veteran benefits that we have to pay in any event. And right now, it's about $20,000 in benefits for two eligible veterans. Right now, we've got Priscilla doing a lot of the recertifying of veterans and things that she really shouldn't do, but is doing out of necessity and working with the town of Wilmington's Veterans District. They graciously offered to help until we decide what we're gonna do. But they can't do that on a permanent basis because it needs to be a contiguous community. One of the communities, at least in the district, needs to be contiguous. The recommendation I'd make to the board, and I made it to the Finance Committee last fall when I presented a preliminary budget to them, is that we join with Lexington and Bedford for the purposes of sharing a veteran service officer. They actually have one and a half such persons between those two communities. They met with the town managers. They assured us that Carlyle would not be a burden to them. In fact, they need a little more capacity in the district for their veterans officer. So the amendment would cover us joining the district. And there's also the underlying agreement that formed the district many years ago. Town Council has reviewed both documents and is satisfied that they're, you know, they're in proper order. The town of Lexington, actually, I got an email from the manager a little while ago. They actually voted last night, because all three communities have to vote for Carlyle to join the district. So Lexington voted last night. They're holding off on executing the agreement until presumably Carlyle votes to join, and Bedford would do the same. But the Finance Committee is aware that this would be a cost. But we really got away with a very inexpensive solution to veterans' services for many years. Well, frankly, we had, you know, one or no veterans eligible for benefits for many years. So it really wasn't much of a burden. But at one point last year, I think we had three or four. Now it's down, the number's come back down to two. But if you were to ask Priscilla, it's among the many other things she's had to do, that this is something that she really doesn't have time for, really properly, you know, shouldn't do it. Because it needs to be a veterans officer, who has to be a veteran, number one, or, you know, been through the training program. So I'd recommend, you know, to the board that, and we can discuss the, you know, the agreement. But as I said, council's reviewed it. And it's, you know, satisfied council. So we would be responsible for about 10% of the cost of administering the Veterans District. And the other 90% is split between Lexington and Veteran. And that's strictly on population. That's something that would be revisited.
In fact, that's one of the questions I had. It doesn't look like it's strictly on population because Bedford has a 26% population, and they're paying 17%. And Lexington has a 63% population, and they're paying 73%. So I'm wondering why Lexington is subsidizing Bedford and not us.
It looks like Lexington is taking on most of the, paying most of the benefits. So that might count for it.
Paying our benefits?
Yeah, the benefits of the people, retirement benefits. I'm sorry, the other benefits, section number six, number six.
Number six Medicare. I don't see where you're looking.
Unemployment insurance premium.
Section said that they...
Oh, section...
Lexington pays the...
Oh, because they're paying the benefits of the...
Of the veteran service officer and the director of the...
It's like they are paying more. They've taken on more.
They have been discussing kind of a better way to share the cost of the district. Over the years since the district was formed, some veterans' housing has opened up in Bedford. And there are more, actually, more veterans eligible for benefits in Bedford now than at one point, there were kind of, there was more in Lexington, and they were picking up more of the share. So they're talking about maybe a more equitable...
By benefits rather than by our population?
Right, right, right. But I think that...
By the number of veterans, that would make more sense.
Yeah, well, the draft, I mean, the spreadsheet that Lexington provided is based on the population of the district. Because that irrespective of...
Which is certainly very beneficial to us.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it looks like, but it looks like too, that there's, so there's the director and then what's the VSO. But it looks like Bedford picks up that, right? It's not a very clear spreadsheet, right? But it looks like with the director, right? There's all of that stuff. And there's benefits with that position. And there are 65, and Bedford's 15. But the VSO position, what's that, veteran service?
Veteran service officer, right.
Yeah, Lexington doesn't cover any of that, but Bedford covers 34/6, right? So I'm sure they, they probably, they... Yeah.
Yeah, all right.
You know, I think it's just it's the way that they split it to make it easy, right? Instead of trying to divide benefits between two towns and all that.
Yeah, I think there's one employee in each community currently. There's one in Lexington, one in Bedford.
So maybe this guy, this individual is based in Bedford, right? So you got the salary and then, see, it looks like, yeah, they pick up 100% of...
The VSO.
The VSO.
And 17% of the director. And Lexington picks up the rest of the director and none of the VSO. So that, and then it looks like, because then the other stuff, 45. It's just making their numbers.
All right, just making them bills.
Yeah.
And we just pay 10% down the line, except for...
Yeah.
Yeah, and then it's... And there's no end term to this, is there?
Yep, there is.
There's a, I think there's an exit.
From the beginning, I didn't see the end.
It's in the, it's actually in the agreement. It's like 2022, I think, somewhere.
Yeah, 2022.
Yeah, June 30th, 2022.
Okay, it's in the one, three, unless it's in Bedford.
Oh, that's right, because, and then these were just the changes to that. So that didn't get changed.
Just the amendment, yeah.
Right. Okay.
And the census, this is based on 2010. So after the census numbers, we can shift around anyway.
Another adjustment to them.
So, Tim, you said that we're spending, that there's 1,500 of this is in the budget already?
Yes, yeah. That's what we, the stipend we were paying the veterans' service officer that we shared with Bill Ricka.
Yeah.
Is there any idea why Acton-Boxborough was so much more? Were they just a larger percentage? You said that they wanted 15,000, right?
Yeah, yeah, I think, well, I think it's, I don't know if it was the population of the veterans' population or the population of the communities. I mean, because Boxborough is a similar sized town to Carlyle. Yeah, I'm not sure what was built into the overhead, yeah.
That could explain it, because we're jumping in with too much larger towns.
True, true, yeah.
Jumping in with a large town in another small town is gonna cost us more.
Yeah.
So do we need to make a motion?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, this wouldn't, not necessarily the final language, but if the board would just maybe vote an indication that you're willing to do this, then...
I would move that we authorize the town administrator to execute an intermunicipal agreement with the towns of Bedford and Lexington for jointly hosting a veteran service officer's office.
Second?
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I think we should thank Priscilla for again.
Yes, yes.
Picking up the ball, and yeah.
Is there anything she doesn't do?
We don't need to see this again.
Unfortunately, she feels guilty about that, but she's been doing everything else, yeah.
I don't think we need to see this again. So I'm wondering if we add into our motion a substantially the same...
As presented.
As presented.
Yeah.
Then you don't have to come back, and we're done.
Right.
Can I also just make a friendly amendment that basically, that says that we're, that we're joining the Bedford-Lexington Veterans District?
Yeah.
Any further friendly amendments? Were those accepted?
Yes.
Second?
Second?
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We're at the Wheel Obrator Solid Waste Renewal Proposal.
Well, Gary and I met with Representative Wheel Obrator a couple of weeks ago when we shared the bad news of Barney and Nate and Lana. And we met the following week. The marketplace is such that, we were told that virtually every facility is at capacity. So if we were to say no to Wheel Obrator, they easily, you know, some other community would take that capacity. And the marketplace is anywhere between $85 and $90 a ton. And I think we should do our due diligence and check that out. But what they have said is you'll find that everyone is at capacity. They can all get $85 to $90 a ton.
Yeah.
And if you dropped out of this district, you might not, there might not be room at the end at the...
To build our own.
At another facility.
Yeah.
We'll have to bury our trash.
So they have just, they just signed up, I think, the city of Lowell at $80 a ton, but they're about 30,000 tons of trash a year. And he said in a lot of smaller towns, they're signing up at $90 a ton. I guess we've been a customer for a long time. So we're in the middle kind of at 85. He said his expectation was that within the term of, and you know, the escalators, I think, maybe 3% a year. And within the five years, he goes, "You might be glad you're at $90 a ton three or four years from now." Because the market, it's a seller's market.
Yeah.
And it's kind of the state of the marketplace. Solid waste is not something you have to bid. We certainly can, as I said, do our due diligence and check if there's capacity anywhere else and if it's at a different rate. But I don't know why he would have told us that we're not gonna find that to be the case. But, you know, Gary and I can do that.
And what about getting, since we do the delivery, is this the closest place?
Oh, at a distance, I don't, I don't, maybe there's, yeah, for the same.
Yeah, I mean, if you have to go to Worcester to...
It might be...
Maine.
More of a problem, yeah, exactly. Well, you, well, go on 95, and you see all the trucks coming down out of Maine.
Yeah, no, exactly, yeah, yeah. Well, just out of curiosity, what was the rate this past year?
69.54.
69.54.
Yeah, our last five-year agreement, they dropped the tipping fee, I think, to 64. We're at about 70 or 72 a ton. They dropped it to 64, and then since then, it's come up to about $70 a ton. But this is, was it 30%, I mean, it's a pretty big...
It's a big incentive to reduce our solid waste.
Well, it's, yeah, speaks to that.
Yeah, what's our tonage here, do you know?
I think it's about 1,600, 1,800 tons a year, something like that.
Yeah, I think we really...
We'd like to reduce, but...
How is our, how is our study beyond the...
Well, we can report on that now, wait till the liaison reports.
No, I think, let's do it now. We have, we have till...
It's like 30 grand.
But, yeah, I mean, first, are you looking for us to actually...
Oh, yeah.
No, no, they said they'd send us a formal proposal. And I should add, and I think I mentioned this at the meeting, is that with their communities, they're willing to fund recycling projects or things that communities need or want at their transfer station. So they're open to that, you know, if we were to re-sign with Wheel Obrator, they're open to funding a project. Yeah, a small project or two, per year, per town, yeah.
Yeah, it could be per town, per year.
So these prices are only, are good for 30 days. Are they gonna, do we need to tell them, "Go ahead and send us the new agreement," or what?
I'll check in with them. They, this was two weeks ago. I think we're probably gonna get it this week. They said they'd send us a formal proposal that reflected these numbers.
Right.
Yeah.
And they said it's virtually identical to what they're proposing elsewhere in the district.
Yeah, I'm wondering...
All right.
So it's more advisory, I guess, at this point.
So one thing that is already, well, maybe it'll come up when we discuss the town meeting warrant articles. But in the, in the section about the revolving funds, to change the wording for the transfer station, so revolving funds, so broaden it so that we can basically use those funds for other expenses related to the transfer station, like the increase in the, in the Wheel Obrator.
Tipping fees.
Yeah, thanks. And Tim, you're saying that's already...
That's already on the warrant. The revolving funds are on every year. But we can definitely, you know, broaden the purpose of that fund.
I don't know whether we need to approve that or just agree that that's gonna happen.
Yeah.
And then the other thing we talked about is Gary's gonna talk. We have three haulers that work in town. And we had some discussion about, there's really no mechanism in place right now to ensure that each of the residents that are hiring that hauler have actually got their sticker. And so it used to be, some years ago, we would actually ask for a list, but we haven't done that in a while. So Gary was gonna talk to all three of the haulers, one of whom is one of his DPW staff members, and say that we need to see those lists of their customers so that then we can cross-reference that at the police station to see if those people have their stickers. We also talked about potentially having a, some kind of a permit that the hauler has to pay for, which we don't have.
And one of the things, I use one of those haulers. And I have been actually carrying my compost personally, even though I am a hauler, because I haven't trusted that he's gonna put it in the compost. So, in fact, it's made me very nervous. So I'd like some assurance that haulers are going to be sorting stuff for us, because I sorted for him when he picks, before he picks it up.
And do you also sort your recyclables?
I do.
Yeah, and so does he provide you with containers for that? No, you provide him with it.
Yeah, but I don't know whether he throws it all in one spot or if he actually takes it to various stations.
And that was another thing that came up, is to understand what those three haulers are doing. They're supposed to provide the ability to put the, to divide things up and put them in the appropriate recycling bins.
Right.
And we don't know if they actually do that or not.
I must admit, I don't see them going to the recycling bins. I see them going right directly to solid waste.
I used, I used to see them go there a lot, but I haven't for years now.
No, and I was even, I was at the transfer station on Saturday, and one of them was backed up right to the closed dumpster, you know? And it was, the truck was packed, right? And the thing is, there, so a resident, if you brought a truckload like that, you'd have to get the permit, right? I mean, you would have to pay $50. I mean, no, most people don't, right? But, but this is the thing, they're making money off of it. And, you know, while it's nice to think that it's all Carlyle residents' trash, I have seen one of the haulers in particular coming from Bill Ricka, you know, with a truck full of trash. And I turned around one day and followed, poof, right into the transfer station, you know? So it, and it's not necessarily all of them. I mean, this is one in particular that I followed, and they came from Bill Ricka, you know, it was right up for the intersection four. I think we need to institute some sort of permit, you know? And, you know, if they have, if they bring 50 trucks worth, they're making money off of each one of those bags, right? And, you know, I mean, it may or may not be Carlyle residents, but if a Carlyle resident brought a truck full that big of trash, it's a $50 permit. So, you know, why somebody who's profiting off of it shouldn't pay that same dumping fee? I, you know?
Yeah.
I mean, or maybe what you do is, you know, you say, okay, look at, you know, we understand you're doing a service for the town. We're gonna charge you X amount per year.
Right, I think that's the way to go.
That's what we discussed.
Yeah, I think that's the way to go, with still ensuring that the people that they are servicing have a permit.
Oh, without a doubt, that, yeah.
They would be required to submit a list of those customers.
I frankly think they should do their own checking, because why should the town now, well, unless that's covered by our fee? I mean, to them, because that's, whenever we ask people to do something that we have to check, that's our staff time doing the checking.
Right, our town money, right.
And so we better be sure that when we're charging that fee, that it's gonna cover that cost.
Well, no, I think it would be perfectly fine if we just said, please provide a list of all your customers with a permit number.
With the permit, sure, there you go, honestly, yeah.
Yeah, because it's easy enough to look it up with a permit number, right? Yep.
Right.
I mean, everything's numerical.
Yep.
So Gary's on top of that, or he's going to get on top of that. The third thing is the sticker fee itself. And I think we, as a board, need to discuss, and maybe it needs to be in the context of, you know, fees in general, because I know that's a discussion that other boards are having. But do we raise the sticker fee? Or do we go with a per-item charge, the way they do in Littleton? Some combination of that? And, you know, you all heard the discussion that we had at the last meeting. The folks that came to that discussion were, I think, primarily people that like to take things out of the swap shed and, you know, are regularly kind of getting what they can out of it. But there was, I think, one or two comments about, from people that were saying, just raise the sticker fee, so. And I think also in this climate, if we're gonna be raising fees in other areas, this might be the time to raise our sticker fees.
Yeah, and we know, and we know that our costs have gone up.
Yes, absolutely.
The tipping fee has gone up significantly.
Well, yeah.
This is the time to do it.
This is the time to do it.
And as we showed on the, at the presentation, we're also, used to make money on our recyclables, and we're not. We're losing money now, so.
I think, just, if I may just add a little bit.
Yes, please.
So what we talked about as a next step there was, you know, to sit down and kind of go through, what are the current finances? You know, hopefully, the revolving fund will be changed so that it can be used for transfer station-related activities. And then kind of come up with a number that we feel comfortable with proposing as an increase. But we kind of talked about maybe doing it in two steps. Because we haven't come to the conclusion yet about the pay for individual items. And so what we may come here for is, where do we feel comfortable where the fees should be, whether we're charging for items or not, and get it there? And then tackle the, are we gonna, you know, how do we charge per item and things like that as potential future thing? But not like go for broke on the fee, because if we do a lot on the fee and then we decide to do per item, then what do we do, right? Then we're kind of overcharging. But it all starts with the finances and trying to figure out what are the costs that we're trying to absorb with the fee. We won't get 100% of the way there.
I'm personally a proponent of user fees because the person who hires a hauler who does not use our facility is paying a fee for that. Why should they also pay for this, for, you know, this transfer station that they're not using it?
Well, they wouldn't have to if you have a, you don't have to get a sticker.
Oh, that's a good point, yeah.
You don't have to get a sticker.
No, but they pay taxes. And if our transfer station is not self-supporting, we're charging them in their taxes.
Right, right, right.
It's a, it's kind of a hard argument, not to argue, but it's kind of a hard argument to make, given the cost of the transfer station versus the cost of the schools, where you may also not be using it. And we're not gonna be doing user fees there.
Yeah, right. Yeah, yes and no, okay, yeah. I'm just trying to frame it as what the goal is. Is the goal to make the transfer station revenue neutral?
No.
Okay, so that, I mean, that's the question. That's what you say is no. Okay, so that, I mean, that's the question, that's what you say is no.
Well, and we have a committee, so I think the committee should come back with a proposal and we can act on it.
Right.
That's what we're gonna, we're gonna get.
I'm just saying that that's not our, that's not our goal.
That's not your goal, okay, fine.
Our goal is to ease the burden.
Okay.
Right.
But, but even just, yeah, the increase in, in tipping fees is thirty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Right, times five is a hundred and fifty grand over, over the five years, right? But thirty thousand is significant. Of course, we missed the window to raise the, the dump sticker, right? But, but I think, you know, that, that's a real cost. And if you let people know, which I'm sure, you know, Priscilla's gonna put the mosquito.
What'd you say?
General fund revenue.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yes, general fund.
Um, no, this would be in the fund. We're talking revolving fund, that's what we're talking about.
Fund, to cover the costs.
But your revolving fund right now is making money at first.
Because we can't spend it.
Because we can't spend it on other.
The general fund, you have all the money here.
We're, we're gonna change what we can spend the revolving fund on.
Yeah. Um, then the fourth item is this idea of trying to make the swap shop, um, more functional in the sense of, you know, midday to the end of the day, it's a mess. You know, there's stuff all over the place, boxes, you know, people dump, they want the containers so they dump all the items on the floor, et cetera, so. Um, and also people not knowing exactly what goes where. So the idea of, um, having, uh, seeing, well, and Tim's done some good work in figuring out with the COA, could we, you, could we set up a couple of positions that would be, um, eligible for the, for senior tax workers to do? Where they, they'd obviously need to get a little orientation and, um, and they would not be, um, responsible for, uh, checking stickers or anything like that. But their goal would be to keep the swap shed in order, encourage people to display their items, you know, and to not just dump a bag. And if there's something that looks like junk, to be able to say, you know, why don't you just put that right into the solid waste? And be able to direct people to different places. So I don't know if you want to say a little bit about it, Tim, or, or actually before you do. And so we thought if we could arrange this, uh, and again, we have no idea if there will be a couple of seniors in town that would be interested in doing this. But, you know, we're gonna wait till the weather's nicer. Um, it's an opportunity to be outside, interact with a lot of people. So we're thinking we'd do a trial, if we could arrange it for like maybe March, April, May, or April, May, June, something like that, and see how it goes.
Yeah, and, and David and Angela, uh, both thought it was a great idea. And there is some available slots that, that we could use.
And you could even have sections within the swap shed of, you know, electronics.
Right, yes.
Nickknacks.
Yeah, household items, microwaves.
Yep, yep. Working microwaves.
Yes. Well, there's another one there today.
There was, so it was number three?
A fifty inch TV. I did not pick it up.
A fifty inch TV?
Yeah.
Oh, you should have called me, I would have picked it up.
See that live streaming camera, might be useful there.
Yeah. I think one of, one of the things we just talked about, just to, just to make it clear is to like, who, who does what and who's, who's on first is these, these people would report to the DPW, right?
If there was some issue, but also if there was something that, you know.
I still think we need a title, I think concierge would be the right.
We also thought ambassador.
Okay.
But, you know, I honestly think if you advertise that, like you said, you know, we want people to work the swap shed, you know, on hours, and even maybe say extend it a couple hours after the dump closes. Cause I think they can close everything up, right? Yeah, well, that's exactly, right, no, we certainly have more people than we do tonight. But I honestly think, I honestly think there would be enough people where you could, you know, you could have like one Saturday. You could have two people on every Saturday throughout the summer. You know, I mean, there's that much interest in it, you know, so. Um, you know, I think you can open it up even more than just.
My hope in this, and, and I don't think that it was shared by everybody, um, but my, my hope in this is if, if we can actually get the garbage out of there and keep it organized, we may be able to keep things there for a couple of days.
Yes, yes.
Therefore get more turnover.
Instead of the DPW having to throw it, remove everything the next day.
We all don't, we all don't live on the same cloud that I'm on that thinks this might be possible, but.
That's right, well, certainly I share the hope.
Yeah.
Let me put it to you that way.
No, but it's true, I mean, because it's, you know, they don't, they just indiscriminately, right? You know, and, and.
They have to, they do know.
Right, no, exactly, no, there's no other option, right? But, but if you do have that person and they're kind of continuously, you know, waiting until the person leaves before they bring the junk to the, you know, cause I can see that being a bit controversial. But, um, but yeah, you know, I agree. And then, and then, yeah, you can have stuff there for a couple of days, especially the stuff that comes in later, right? Which nobody ever really sees.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, and then obviously the signage, which we've talked about before, but I think, and, and so the question we didn't resolve was about the swap shed hours and whether we limit, you know, end early the, uh, ability to drop something off. And I think we'll, I think we'll just hold off on that for now and try this other stuff.
Fred, see. The ambassadors slash concierge is first and see then.
Right.
And the better signage and, yeah.
The other thing that we threw out there is a possibility that we're gonna keep talking about.
We're out there, get it?
Yeah.
Oh.
Is it my turn now?
Can I go home now?
Oh, boy, here they go, okay, here they go.
Um, was, you know, maybe, maybe we have a, a late in the day permit that we sell to people who do sell things. And so, you know, there's a, there's a, there's a special permit, it doesn't matter if you live in Carlisle or not, you have to have the permit, but you can come in and you can collect.
Not because residents should be able to come in at any time, even if they resell, right?
Yes, this was, should, can we, can we sell a, a permit to people who are just gonna come in from out of town and resell?
Tables, yeah, tables, no, they wouldn't, but anyway.
Okay.
Yeah, they're, they're.
Um, I, I do feel though obligated to pass on what one of the members of the working group spoke to very passionately. And that is, you know, that down the, what we're trying to do is look at options that seem, uh, that, that we think we can institute now and, um, may mean that we don't have to go to something like pay as you throw. But there is a sentiment among, among some on this working group that really in the long run, the most effective way to reduce solid waste is to go to a pay as you throw system. But we'll, we'll see how this goes.
I agree with that person. Yeah, that's the way, the only way we, at the end of the day, will we, that we will incentivize people. And I, um, for your signage, I really again want to repeat my encouragement that it all be graphic. No words, please, because people, this, at the, it's too much to read.
Right, and, and people don't read very well today.
Well, they do, but, uh, it's hard to penetrate when you have that much, that much.
Okay.
Excellent. Thank you, well, that's.
The report, we are making progress.
It is prog, it sounds like there is progress being made and I'm pleased. Okay, um, eight, seven thirty was the discussion of the wheel operator, okay? Eight o'clock, we're half an hour ahead here, guys. Um, the twenty twenty warrant article, are you here for?
Can I propose that we move to?
Oh, okay, great.
I just was working.
Okay, great.
Can I propose that we move on to like the town administrator report or something? Cause people might be interested, people might be interested in.
All right.
Right?
Nobody, yeah, nobody's interested in your report.
It's a filler.
That was the word.
Or maybe, uh, under appointments, we have the insurance advisory committee.
You can do that.
There's something.
Yeah, a part of that, so.
Okay, yes, um, we need to furnish one member of the Board of Selectmen to the Insurance Advisory Committee. And I understand that the meetings will mostly be probably in the late afternoon. So we need somebody from the Board of Selectmen who would be willing and able to attend late afternoon meetings.
I would volunteer for that.
Excellent.
Thank you.
You.
Cause I've, I've had some experience with that.
Oh, even better.
Yeah.
Perfect, and he's a lovely gentleman to work with. Okay.
But I'm meaning nasty on, as the day goes on and my martini time gets closer, so.
Okay, so we're putting.
That's a bring, oh, we gotta have martini.
Alan Brown, Alan Brown to serve as.
Alan Brown.
All right, shall I make a motion?
Go ahead.
All right, I move that the Board of Selectmen appoint the following individuals to serve on the Insurance Advisory Committee. Have we set a term for them?
Uh, it's an ad hoc committee, isn't it? So it's kind of.
They can see anyone.
And.
We'd have to do it again in June, I think, at June thirty.
Can't, can't we make this, uh, a committee that just la, that will, because it's just to do a job and it's not a standing committee, is it, that we wanted to have?
If you look at the next page, it kind of is a, our bill committee.
Yeah.
Have they already been appointed if it's June, July to?
Uh, because.
No.
No.
Is this, where?
Do it through June and the following, I wouldn't do it through.
Yeah, we're, where, where do this? As needed through the budget process, yeah.
Yeah.
So should we make it through, um, June of twenty twenty?
Twenty one or?
Twenty twenty one, yeah.
Yeah, let's do that, okay. Let's try it again then. I move that the Board of Selectmen appoint the following individuals to serve on the Insurance Advisory Committee, uh, for a term to end on or about, on or about June?
Thirty.
Thirty.
Twenty twenty one.
Kimberly Kane, Finance Director, to serve as the IAC Chairperson, non-voting. Timothy Goddard, Town Administrator, Personnel Director. Steve Mack, to serve as the Police Union Representative. Kirk Bishop, to serve as Dispatch Union Representative. Linda Venaria, to serve as the Teachers Union Representative. Anush Coats, to serve as Town Hall Non-Union Representative. Chris Serene, to serve as DPW Non-Union Representative. Jennifer Pike, to serve as the Library Non-Union Representative. Nancy Harvey, to serve as the Town of Carlisle Retiree. James Dar, to serve as the Finance Committee Representative. Alan Lewis, to serve as the Board of Selectmen Representative.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No. And I just was gonna ask in the open, but all of these people, all the, all the employees are twenty hours or more? We didn't select anybody who wasn't twenty hours, right?
No. Yeah.
I'm not.
Yeah.
I just, just, just cause it, it says they have to be.
Yeah.
Let's just check.
She's over twenty between the two positions, correct? So, yeah. As apartment head, yeah, or we'll find.
All right.
That was causing trouble, huh?
All right, now we can do the, um, the, um, are you here for a particular agenda item?
Let's come.
Sounds good.
Articles, yeah.
All right, so let's, uh, do the, um, town, uh, town administrator's.
Report, okay. Uh, attached to my report, you'll find a letter from a coconut hours who will be coordinating this year's old home day, uh, activities.
It wasn't in, it wasn't in there.
Not in the packet.
That's not in the packet?
No.
Nope.
Oh.
That's okay.
Well, they did some.
It wasn't in the, in the, uh.
They, uh. They did, uh.
Wait, are you on the old home day?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's not in there?
No, it's just, that's the dates, right?
It's just the dates of.
The dates are on, the dates are in here.
Are we really not gonna approve old home day?
The dates, the dates are in here.
That's right.
As long as those are the correct dates, that corresponds to the letter.
So this is two weekends this year before Fourth of July?
June nineteenth and twentieth.
It's not the last weekend of June.
Yeah.
Right. They asked for the nineteenth and twentieth, but I think it's three days, isn't it?
Yeah, cause the motion says nineteen to twenty.
Nineteen, twenty twenty one, it says, it is three days.
Well, that's what I put in the motion, but their letters said nineteen and twenty.
Yes, it's nineteen.
I think it, it is parts of three days, correct?
It typically goes over Sunday.
Friday, Saturday, and then finishes on Sunday, so.
We can approve it, if they don't do anything, they don't do anything.
I move that the Board approve the request for, of the Old Home Day Committee to use town properties, facilities, and roadways to stage the Old Home Day Celebration on June nineteenth through the twenty first, twenty twenty.
Second.
Um, any discussion? I'm just checking, it's, that's a Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, okay. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
I'm putting in my calendars. It's Juneteenth, or the nineteenth. Okay.
All right, uh, item number two is, it was supposed to be the annual renomination of animal inspectors. I think I put it as reanimation of, uh, animal inspectors, so it's. But, uh, once again, Larry Sorley and Deb Tor are willing to serve as animal inspectors and, uh, the Board nominates them, the state actually makes the, uh, the appointments formally. But they're, they're willing to serve again, uh, so we have a motion for your action.
I move that the Board nominate Deborah A. Torre and Lawrence Sorley as animal inspectors for the Town of Carlisle in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter one forty, Section one five one.
Second.
Quick question, you know? So the, the other, the form you included in this section, which is the Animal Control Officer Designation twenty twenty form, it's got Matt Svatek's name. But is the?
That's a dog control.
Yes, dog.
It's animal control, it's not.
Animal control, not inspector, uh.
Okay, but the form that's in here is a different form than what we're talking about.
Okay.
Not inspector.
Okay, so it's just a different form than what got included here for the animal control?
Right, they're two different, different offices, right.
And do we need to reappoint Matt?
Well, Matt and Larry are, maybe that's partly confusion. Matt and Larry are animal control officers, they're done on, as annual appointments. So in June, you'd appoint both of them for another year.
They're animal control and Larry and Deb are animal inspectors?
This is in our packet.
They do barn permits.
Which is for.
Yeah, Deb, I know, cause we.
So that's where the confusion is.
Okay, yeah.
So this, this was the wrong form. Okay, got it.
Okay.
The right form's with the letter. The coconut on a letter.
Okay.
I'm making Tim look bad, then.
All right, item number three, the, um, the dispatcher.
Wait, wait, we have to vote, we have a, um, we had a.
We have a motion.
Motion and a second, and then we had further discussion asking about the forms. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Yes, the dispatchers.
Okay, uh, the dispatchers, uh, would like to get started with collective bargaining. Uh, they would like to meet, uh, late afternoon seemed to work better for them, so. It would be during the week, four P M. to, uh, five or six P M. Um, so whomever on the Board wants to be part of the bargaining team, I guess it's, uh.
Sorry?
Didn't we pick somebody?
I think we picked some people last time.
You, I think.
I thought it was you and me.
I didn't think it was me.
Oh, I thought it was because we did police.
I thought it was you and, yeah, Alan, you and Kate said you'd do that.
Oh, we did, okay.
Yeah.
So your afternoons are gonna be busy.
Yeah, right. So.
Just try and put them all in the same one.
Back to back meetings.
Well, we, we, we knocked police out real fast, so we oughta.
Uh, uh, the dispatchers, yeah, historically are, are not as tough, I think, as.
They're not as tough?
Yeah, no, I mean.
Okay, that's a better.
Neither one is bad, but, you know, there, and it, and it did go quickly last time.
Is that something we have to vote on, that they're gonna do it, or?
I thought we did the last one, I thought we agreed the last.
I think, I think, is it because your liaisons that, uh, you didn't vote on it?
Not in the minutes.
It wasn't in the minutes.
Okay, you know, we can read.
And probably wise to vote it again, just to put it in the minutes.
Okay, so, um, I need a nomination or whatever, or appointment, motion.
I move that, uh, we.
Authorize?
Authorize, yeah, Alan Lewis, um, and, uh, Kate Reed, uh, to, uh, be part of the dispatcher's collective bargaining, um, negotiations.
Okay.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Who are the other people? Is somebody from FinCom gonna be there, or?
It, uh.
Last time we had Jim Dar for the police, and I wonder if he'll do this one as well.
Jim usually is the volunteer.
Yeah.
And sometimes Lynn Lipinski, but Jim usually makes all the meetings, you know? Okay. And then we have the, uh, upcoming, uh, meeting schedule, uh, that we've got, uh, mapped out so far. Uh, on the eleventh, we have another coordination meeting with the Finance Committee and, uh, various other committees. We should have a draft warrant, uh, together, uh, by them, by then at least. It, not in final form, but, uh, uh, more fleshed out than the list of articles you see tonight.
Okay, I am going, I will be here on the twenty fifth. I'm leaving the next day for Tasmania and I'm coming back on the ninth. So I will be here for the tenth, but I'm not sure I'll be all there. You know what I mean?
Okay.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm actually, I'm not.
So you'll be like Luke.
I'm not here on the eleventh.
Wow, it only, it only took you, what, three years to get a good shot at Robert Allen?
All right.
Yeah, but I'm not here on the eleventh, actually.
You're not even, you're not even here, you're not even, not only are you not there, but you won't be here or there.
He will be present, she might not be here.
Right.
Yes, yes.
She'll be present, but I will not be present.
Okay, so you're gonna be in Barcelona. Oh, I hope you go see the Gaudi.
The eleventh.
Ralph Park.
Because otherwise, we don't have a. Fantastic. And Alan, are you available? Because if, well, you're gonna be here, okay.
Yeah.
Maybe not, right, okay, so I guess we don't have to worry about a quorum.
All right, no, I just, I just, as I said, just wanted to let people know.
Kate, do you want to have Alan chair the March tenth meeting, so that you can have everything together?
Yes, that makes a lot of sense.
We're talking about February eleventh.
No, I'm talking about March ten.
Oh, March ten, okay.
That's a good point.
We were talking about.
Oh, you're months.
You're right, you're right, we were talking about.
But Luke's not here February eleventh.
February eleventh, yeah.
Got it.
Yeah, so I think Alan.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, that way he can put the packet together in a minute.
Excellent. Can I just ask? Are we gonna get anything in advance to look at for this February eleventh meeting? For reviewing the operating and capital budget requests? Is there gonna be something ahead of time?
We'll ask the Finance Committee for that.
Nathan, did you go to the L T C? When was that, Monday? This, this Monday or last Monday? Yesterday? Yeah, so we'll probably have a liaison report about that.
Yeah, not a whole lot of details, but we only got through two things.
Okay.
It was only a forty-five minute meeting.
So I guess the question then stands that Bonnie asked, is that are we gonna have, what sort of?
Advance material to look at?
We can ask the Finance Committee for some materials in advance.
Yeah, have them as part of the packet at least.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, I'm not asking for more than that, more than a couple of days, but yeah. And the other thing about that February eleventh meeting, so we have Civic Moxie planning to come, and they're thinking around eight P M. That's what we talked about. So is that still a reasonable time for them?
Sure, yes, yeah, we'll work around that.
I'll wait to see what actually is on the agenda.
I'll send you the, the draft agenda.
With the plan, and how much time do you think, this looks like a pretty full agenda.
Already, yeah, and, and I think there's one or two other things that have come up. Coscom.
Yep.
Is here tonight, but we may, we may dispatch it tonight, but it might have to come back on, on the eleventh.
So do you think twenty minutes?
Yeah.
For Civic Moxie?
Or longer?
What kind of questions are they gonna be asking?
Well, I'll send you the questions that are in these kitchen conversations, but it's really much.
The kitchen conversation?
Well, not really, it's much broader really from us. It's sort of our priorities as a board.
We need to have time to.
I know, I know.
Well, we'll discuss, so don't cut it too short, because this will be a good chance for us. You know, we don't often have a chance to discuss things as a board, so let us take this opportunity to. Minimum half hour, forty-five minutes.
Does it make sense to try to bump them to the twenty-fifth, though? I mean, it's not necessarily critical.
Oh, because you're not gonna be.
No, I don't, I've already talked with them.
Well, I know, but I'd like you to be in part of the discussion as a board.
I appreciate, I'm just, that's gonna be a long meeting. I mean, the, the town coordination stuff usually goes on for.
Well, you're right, that's not, I, I could check and see if they're available, because it's not, they're.
That's true.
It's not too late for them to hear from us.
All right.
It's on the twenty-fifth, so should I do that? Okay. All right.
Yeah, I just, just because then we can give them the time that they deserve, but also too.
And give ourselves the time.
Right, because, yeah, there's a lot to go through.
All right, and then.
Okay.
I'm not gonna be here.
No, well, that's okay.
Yeah.
Good.
I'll email you my questions.
Okay. All right, ten minutes to eight. We've been through this whole thing. We've beaten it to death.
Minutes, liaisons?
Minutes, sure, let's do minutes. I don't wanna get to liaisons until later, because I wanna have time to discuss things. We have the minutes of Tuesday, January fourteenth. Do we have a motion for approval? Or approved as amended, or whatever you wanna move?
I would, I gave a couple of small things to Jen, but I would like to somewhere include near the beginning, just a note when we do not have live streaming coverage, and that was the case with this meeting.
Yeah, I agree. So how do we do that with an asterisk somewhere? At the bottom, or, or a note at the end?
Maybe it's right at the beginning, you know, below the attendance who was there, it just didn't.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm happy to move that we accept the minutes of January fourteenth, 2020. As amended.
I have one.
As amended, sorry.
Yep.
Oh, you have a.
There's a period missing, that's all.
Oh, okay, as amended. Ticky, 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 all right.
Hey, now I have something, right? I mean, now she's got my name right.
That's, and you, you, that's all you noticed?
That's all I found.
Well, there was a whole word missing.
Oh, all right.
So we can see who's, okay.
Go ahead, Ben.
We have a sec, a motion, a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And another motion, yes, for the second set.
I move that we accept the minutes of the Board of Selectmen meeting on Tuesday, December tenth, two thousand and nineteen.
I have, oh, go ahead, is there a second?
Sorry, I gotta get.
I actually submitted some changes, which you guys haven't seen. So I would like to ask you to amend your motion to, as, as amended.
And you're not gonna tell us what?
I was gonna say.
It wasn't a change. I asked her to include the policy that we talked about, because it says on the motion made, was unanimously voted to adopt the following payroll procedures effective, and then there were no following payroll procedures, that's all. And then, and there was minutes approved in November twenty-sixth, two thousand and nineteen as amended, so I thought we should put minutes as amended. That was one of my two big, big complaints.
I'll accept that as a friendly amendment.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm just leaving mine in the, in the back here, and you can look at them if you need to find out where some of those were. Okay. All right, it's almost eight. Let's do the twenty-twenty warrant article presentations, vote to close the warrant. Planning board is not here.
Yes, yeah. Peter.
Oh, Peter, sorry. I was looking for Madeline, and you don't look like her. Yes.
Okay.
Because of the way you're sitting, you're kinda scooped down.
Yeah, yeah, let's, let's, thank you, I appreciate that.
I'm trying, I'm trying.
I own up to my own mistakes, apologize. Would you like to make a presentation? Do we need a?
Well, just the, the planning board had submitted five potential warrant articles. They're not proceeding with an amendment to the solar photovoltaic facility by law. They're planning, come on up, they're planning, I think, a resubmitting in, basically in the same form, the marijuana articles from last time, and also designation of Church Street as a scenic road. So I think it's, it's four potential articles, Peter, is that right?
Correct.
Yeah.
So. I'm sorry, you are doing the medical marijuana essentially as you did them last time?
Uh, no, there's definitely a review. We've discussed it. It's not gonna be as confusing.
Ah, okay, because I thought.
Definitely will be.
They were essentially as last time.
Yeah, no, last.
I was going to protest.
Yeah, we won't digress on that. So we've talked about as a board, kind of the timing of how we think we can support it is laid out, and that's what I'm sharing with you here.
Okay.
So we've discussed this with Madeline. We discussed this as a board last meeting, and we have council coming in at our next meeting to discuss it, lay out some, you know, review of last year's, and then what needs to be cleaned up, and, and then we'll go from there. So we're, we're pretty confident we can hit this.
Okay. With, with Madeline at the helm, I'm pretty confident you will, too.
So this, this schedule is, so we're voting on final language on March tenth, so we'll have to have something outside of the warrant for this, outside of the book, right?
Yeah, well, it, it'll be, it'll, it'll be close to the final language that's in the warrant book. Usually with zoning articles, we try to have the language as much like the motion that'll be voted on at town meeting as possible. Other articles have a more vague description, but with zoning amendments, we try to be more precise.
Right, but they're not, they're not having the public hearing until March thirtieth.
Yeah, I guess I, I guess Madeline and I should have known that. Three ten is the final date for a final draft.
That's, I just saw that here. Our, our meeting on March tenth, we're voting on final language.
And do we have to do it then? Maybe we can do it. When, when does that have to go to press, to the printer?
It's.
We're working backward from the twenty-seventh, and we have to have it two weeks before that.
I would say it would be the week of the seventeenth that's gonna go to the printer, so.
Okay, so we can't.
You can't wait till the twenty-fourth, but.
Yeah.
If it's, if the motion's different at town meeting, it's different, and that can be explained why, you know, the warrant had to be, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we're not looking at a wholesale change of the bylaw. It's, it's cleaning up some of the mistakes that were in last year's presentation, and then maybe expanding some of the language to, to allow, and we'll have the option of either, we're still discussing the three options that are in front of us, which ones we're actually gonna put forward. That will definitely happen before the tenth. So.
So where did we land on that?
So we're, we're gonna accept the text of the bylaw that you think you'll be.
Yeah.
It'll be something close to what we'll end up on it. Are you, do you think the March thirtieth public hearing will substantially change?
Uh, we'll, we'll know if, at that hearing. It's not like we're gonna change it in two weeks, right? I mean, at that point, it's either gonna be, we're, I, I don't know the exact term you use at town, but you'll pass or pull it.
Yeah, you just won't move it.
We'll move it, right, we'll, we'll just.
Not advance, yeah.
If we get poor, you know, poor feedback on the thirtieth, then we would move to just not move it.
Okay.
But Madeline feels pretty strong, it's good to have something going at this point. It's been kind of languishing for a long time. That's it. And then the scenic road is, we'll notify residents if you guys decide to put it on the warrant.
What's the driving force behind this?
It's like a section of road where there's a scenic road, and you know, it's, it's right up here, but there's a section of road that's scenic, then it's not, then it's scenic again. So it's, it's, it's the only portion of that road set in the middle of town that's not scenic.
Which is the? Which portion is that? So there's the cut, there's the, the side.
It's church.
Across the street here.
Yeah.
Right, that short section.
Yep.
And then there's church, the other side.
It's the one that's on the common.
Oh.
So.
So the rest of Church Street is already a scenic?
Dropping down into Spalding.
That's alr, that's already a scenic designated?
Uh, you know, I'd have to check on that, but it's that, it's, it's from that section of the common to Spalding Field.
And who's requesting it?
Uh, the planning board. It doesn't come from a resident, so we'll notify the residents after if there's a decision to put it on the warrant.
And what's the, what's the reasoning for the planning board saying we want this to be?
That's a good question, so I don't have the, the strong, you know, push either way myself, and I forget, I forget what was discussed, so.
Okay.
Doesn't seem to have characteristics of other scenic roads in town with.
Yeah, and we, we need to use it for parking.
Well, it's the preservation of the stone wall that's along that stretch.
That's historic district, though, so they can't do anything with the stone wall, right?
I don't know. I don't know that for a fact.
Only plantings, I'm, I'm pretty sure they can't.
Yeah, so it's curb cuttings, it's the stone wall, it's the trees.
Yeah, that's, well, trees would not be historic.
Yeah, and so it's, it's really, I think the, the majority of the protection wants to be the short section that's kind of wooded where the playground is, uh, because there's really, there's no stone wall past that, dropping down the hill. That's the.
It, it just, it just jumps out at me as a potential conflict, because now you have, now you'll have two boards that have say over what somebody wants to do, and you'll have to go to both boards, right? So you'd have to go to the planning board if you wanna do something with a stone wall, and you're gonna have to go to HisCon in order to do something with that stone wall, or curb cuts or something like that.
Yeah.
And how many homes are there? Three?
I guess that's a good question. I don't know if there's a conflict.
Once the church is home, right?
Right, and then there's, there's definitely the one after.
And then there's village court, and then there's one after that.
Yeah.
And that's it.
Yeah. And then who owns the property after that?
That's.
Majority of it's town on the, on the right.
The right's on the town, on the left is the back, that guy.
It's the psychiatrist.
Yeah.
Maybe we should just give you a chance to review.
Yeah, I'll, I'll bring the questions back.
And then we can always put it on as an item at the next meeting if, um.
Good. Thank you.
Hey.
The, the board should vote to refer the zoning bylaws to the planning board for the purposes of the public hearing that they'll have to conduct. That's the way the, the process of a zoning bylaw.
How about if we just do that right now, or no?
Yeah, no, you, that's what I'm saying, you probably should do this, we can.
Okay, so, uh.
Send that to them.
Could I have a motion to?
Refer. I move, I move that we refer the following zoning bylaws to the planning board for their, what?
Purpose of a public hearing.
One is revisions to the zoning bylaws, section five dot ten, medical marijuana facilities. Number two is revisions to zoning bylaws, section five dot eleven, temporary moratorium on marijuana establishments.
That says.
Removal.
Removal of the temporary moratorium.
And the third is a new zoning bylaw, section pertaining to recreational marijuana facilities.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And what about?
I didn't do the scenic road one.
I was gonna ask you about that.
I didn't do that, just. It's not a zoning by.
It's not a zoning by.
Yes, yeah, it's just a designation, okay, got it. Thank you, Peter.
And if it was, I was gonna separate it, but I wasn't gonna go for it.
We weren't ready, yeah, yeah.
Okay, Duke, complete streets?
That was, Ian Freeman had presented that last time. I can go through a couple of them quickly. The Board of Health is meeting actually Thursday night to talk about the mosquito district proposal, but they had presented that to you, I think, a few meetings ago.
About joining that mosquito control district.
I think.
They mentioned it. It wasn't really a presentation.
Oh, okay.
But it was.
They were just gonna explore it.
But their, but their board will take a position Thursday, I think, on whether the.
They're supposed to be.
Yeah, on what?
The mosquito control district. And that means that we would participate then in some kind of spray?
Yeah, and, and I think the cost is about thirty thousand dollars to join the district.
Yeah.
I don't know more about that.
They're, they're gonna discuss it and then make a recommendation back to us?
Yes.
Well, there's gonna be.
I don't wanna vote on something.
Yeah, they're, they're gonna need to hold some sort of public meeting on this, because it is not gonna just be a.
Yeah.
A slam dunk. I already got an email about it.
It was defeated handsomely at the last time it was.
It's gonna add an hour and a half to town meeting.
Yes.
Yeah.
Nice.
Does anybody plan to go on Thursday? I have it on my calendar. I'm trying to remember if I can still do it.
I may go.
All right.
Thirtieth, when is?
Let me just double check that I can still make this.
Thursday, I think.
Thirtieth.
Thursday, yes, I know, yeah.
Yeah.
Thursday, the thirtieth, right? Yeah, I have it on my calendar. I will definitely be going. So I will let you know. Thirtieth at seven, I think, or seven thirty?
Seven thirty, I think, maybe.
January thirtieth, yeah.
Yep.
Where is Board of Health usually at there?
For seven.
Upstairs.
Yeah, they're usually upstairs, I think. Yeah, they're usually upstairs, I think. One, what is it, Nichols?
Nichols.
It's gonna be a tight.
Yeah, that room, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
And the, uh, the rec- recreation commission's proposing a, a dog park. They intend to, uh, seek a private grant and then eventually CPA funding for that, so it doesn't need to be a standalone article.
That's the other thing the AKC, by the way, gives grants for.
Dog parks?
They didn't put in a CPA application, so.
They may, so it may be next year's CPA. They're gonna seek a private grant now for, I guess, the design of the park and then, so it doesn't need to be a separate warrant article, so that one's gonna go away.
What happened to the Spalding Field design and rebuild and AstroTurf from last year?
Yeah, did they ever get the, um, uh, oh, I'm no longer the, it's Nathan though, I think it's RecCut, but, um, yeah, the study for Spalding. Yeah, didn't, cause they were supposed to do for all the sinkholes, right? They were supposed to do a study and everything, yeah. Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure Drew followed up on it. I mean, Drew's not one to let the ball go.
I can ask, uh.
Could we, oh, well, I'd like to know, cause we gave them, what, twenty K to do that? And I'd like to know what happened.
Number twenty-five is going away?
Uh.
Number.
Well, I would assume it's going away unless they somehow get.
Yeah, it's not gonna be a standalone article, so it's, yeah.
It's not gonna be a warrant article, you're saying?
Yeah.
So that won't help, yeah.
And they haven't applied for CPA for this year, so it would have to be next year.
Do they have a proposed location for this?
I think they're, I think, in Banta Davis, right?
I think that's correct, yeah.
People go there anyway, so they just would have a, get them off the soccer field and into the, you know? Let the people step in their own. I'm having to let my own yard at this point. Okay. And conservation.
Conservation, um.
Conservation, um, is here. Come on up. Give us the.
Little chairs over there too.
Yeah, that's representative per dollar.
Yeah.
I don't know if it's better than ours. I don't know if it's better than ours.
The big guns are here.
I hope it's suitably intimidated.
Doesn't take much.
Do you know everybody?
No.
This is Ken Bellitz. He's co-chair of the cranberry bog working group and on the conservation commission. You know me. This is Alex Para, who's on the conservation commission and on the cranberry bog working group. And that's Dan Wells, who's chair of the conservation commission.
Oh, okay.
And they're all very smart.
I don't know about Alex, but.
It all went up tremendously when you got off Luke.
See what happens? Maybe I should do the same here. Is that what you're trying to apply?
Yeah. And come back to the conscom.
The doggone.
Alright, so you put in a five thousand dollar item in your operating budget?
Yes.
The plan, the fincom suggested didn't belong there and, um, and that's why you're here.
Right.
It should be a separate warrant article, cause it was not a recurring item.
Okay.
And, but they did, they didn't say just take it out and don't put it as a warrant article. There's still an support of it or?
When I, when I called Victor and asked him about it, he said, um, that it needed to be a warrant article. So he didn't say, don't bother. He said it needs to be a warrant article, cause it's.
They, they still expressing some support of the, whatever.
Well, let's hear that.
They may not take a position.
So the backdrop of this is, I won't go hugely into the background, but the backdrop, of course, is the, is the end of the commercial, you know, cultivation of cranberries on the bog. Um, and following that, the Cranberry Bog Alternatives Committee spent a couple of years, um, did a Herculean effort to evaluate, uh, the alternatives. And that culminated in a report, a supplemental report in March of two thousand and eighteen, you know, recommending that the town seek to convert the cranberry bog to, um, cultivation of hay. Um, and part of that is driven just by the regulatory constraints that we face. It's all wetlands. And so in a very broad way, the Wetlands Protection Act limits us to for-profit, commercial agriculture or, um, projects that you might loosely call restoration, ecological restoration, or enhancement of the habitat values. So those are the, kind of the broad alternatives that we have. Um, I joined the working group last year and at that point, I'm not quite sure of the history of the transition between the Alternatives Committee and the working group, but I joined the working group last year. And at that point, the working group was in the process of trying to figure out how to implement the recommendations of the Alternatives Committee, primarily the, the hay. Um, and the, the problem that the group really faced is that the cost of converting to hay has been estimated approximately nine thousand dollars an acre. In discussions with Mark Duffy, he suggested that he would wanna do approximately thirty of the forty acres of cranberry bog. Um, so the town would be looking at something around two hundred and seventy thousand dollars to, uh, to implement that. So needless to say, we all had a gulp and, uh, and, uh, started to look at how we might fund that. We did some outreach to, uh, um, outside groups. Um, but the truth, I think, is that, uh, the, the working group's sense and evaluation was that really the support for converting it to hay is kind of lukewarm. Um, everybody that we speak to always starts out with, gee whiz, why can't we do cranberries? Um, and, uh, and then I, you know, I don't really like hay fields, it's, so, so, um, that was the impetus for us to go back and look at, uh, the alter-, other alternatives that, that had been proposed and short of benign neglect, um, you know, all of the alternatives and particularly the engineered ecological restoration look, you, you know, that was serious money. I mean, initial investment of over six hundred thousand dollars plus some ten years of ongoing expenses. None of that, you know, seemed viable or, or possible. And again, looking at the, at the conversion to hay, one of the problems is even if the town were willing to invest the upfront costs of conversion, um, the long-term economics were doubtful at best, uh, meaning just simply the cost of cultivating the hay on an annual basis was barely worth the, uh, economic cost of just going and buying the hay, frankly. So, um, that sent us to, kind of to where we are today and what we did was to invite, uh, on a volunteer basis and we're very grateful, uh, to Mary Ann DePinto, who is with Wetlands Program at DEP for twenty-five years, uh, and Brian Windmiller, who is a wetland scientist who, um, I think he now runs an outfit called.
Zoo New England? Yeah, he's wildlife, wildlife biologist.
And they both came out, uh, and did, uh, reviewed the situation with us. And their viewpoint, which was different from the information that, that had been supplied to the group previously, was that you could, uh, do a, uh, maintenance program that had a component of enhancing wildlife habitat and that that would be, uh, a low-cost alternative, maybe even close to what we're paying now on an annual basis for the maintenance of the, of the bog, um, that could gain approval from DEP. Um, and the essential idea is that, uh, this plan would involve, you know, removal of the trees that are growing up in the bog, removal of invasives, um, perhaps annual flooding or more often of the bog to, the bogs to discourage, um, growth of invasives and trees, uh, and some other measures to enhance the value of the bog as primarily turtle habitat. Uh, so the warrant article that we would propose would be to fund the preparation, uh, by a wetland, qualified wetland scientist of, of the plan component. Uh, I think we feel confident in-house that we can prepare all of the administrative paperwork and filing of the notice of intent, uh, and so on and so forth. But we do need an outside person, uh, to prepare a viable plan. Um, it was our view, Dan is, you know, in the business, a attorney that, you know, been involved in a lot of wetland stuff, and it was our view that five thousand should be, you know, more than adequate to cover that cost. Um, so that's.
Yeah, I think, uh, I just wanted to stress the, uh, you know, for, for those of you, I don't know if everyone's familiar with the bog, but if, you know, the question is why, why do we have to do anything? Why do we have to spend any money? And, you know, uh, as we're already starting to see in the, just a couple of years since they stopped harvesting, there's some red maple and other trees are starting to, to grow in there. And pretty much it seemed like one of the unanimous goals of, of people who use the bog or people involved in these working groups is maintaining those open vistas. So what this currently, under the agricultural exemption, we're allowed to cut, you know, pretty much do anything, man-, manage the vegetation. But this is, this is a way we can kind of pitch this to DEP as an ecological restoration. And it's, and, um, al- also to point out, there is, um, an endangered turtle, the Blandings turtle. There has been a record of that and it's, it's presently, the natural heritage program hasn't mapped the, the bog for this species, but which is typically what happens. So we're not sure why that didn't happen, but we know. So, and that's a pretty important, it's a threatened species, they're very uncommon. Um, so we're hoping part of this is to kind of manage the habitat, hoping maybe we can help them expand their population or at least provide ideal conditions for them. And, and it's not just turtles, there's all kinds of wildlife that use this bog. And as, instead of being managed for cranberries, now we're gonna try and manage it so it's suitable, you know, ideal conditions for wildlife. So this is a pretty good bang for your buck with this kind of approach. There's a limited project under the Wetlands Protection Act that allows for doing these kind of projects as long, as long as there's a clear benefit, you know, ecological benefit. So we think we, we can easily meet the criteria to get approved, um, by, well, the commission would be approving it, but ultimately DEP.
There's nothing like being the judge of your own case.
But like Alex mentioned, you know, I do, I do this kind of work professionals, professionally. So between Alex, you know, all of us and Sylvia's knowledge, we can do a lot of in-kind work on all the paperwork and, but, um, you know, as volunteers, we can't do everything. We need some additional outside mapping and maybe surveys and, uh, things like that, that, you know, we think for five thousand dollars is, we can get a lot accomplished for this.
And it would give you a reference, a referenceable plan.
Exactly.
As people change, the plan needs, yeah.
Yeah.
And in addition, with the documents applying, everything costs out.
Yeah.
So that every plant that needs, you know, a sense of value for that.
Yeah, I mean, even a, even a, an empty field requires maintenance if you don't want it.
To become.
To be completely overrun with all kinds of other things that you don't want, even if you are only gonna hay it.
Yeah. Everybody?
Yeah, I have some questions if I may.
Sure.
So, uh, at, at first I was gonna summarize it a different way, but so, but it, so is it, is this plan going to take it out of agriculture and put it into conservation? Okay.
I'm sorry, I missed the answer.
The, the, the answer is yes, and, 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 I mean, just to flesh that out a little bit is that the agriculture that's permitted under the Wetlands Protection Act is for-profit agriculture. It's gonna be intended to be, you know, a commercial operation. And so for a lot of reasons, I mean, I think everybody understands that cranberries are, are not viable, um, in the bog. And, um, the limitations on Mark Duffy himself, um, in terms of what he can do out there are, uh, regulatory and based on, um, FDA requirements. Basically the only USDA, the, the only thing that he can, would be permitted to do is the, is the hay. And so we come back to presumptively, at least, um, the only agricultural option is the hay. Um, and it's our judgment that the economics of that make it very uncertain. So we could do the conversion and next year, one, two years, three years down the road, somebody says, well, I don't, you know, I don't wanna hay it because it's, it's more work than it's worth. Um, so we don't, we don't see, uh, this enough of a chance of sustainability to warrant the town making that kind of investment.
Okay, and so this plan, and, and I'm not being flip here, but this, this, this plan is basically converting it to conservation land, but it's actually still kind of maintaining, maintaining it as the bog as it is now, except for we're growing turtles, not cranberries.
Yeah, I mean, but.
Other wildlife, right?
Yeah, but, but.
Okay.
Although, to be fair, the cranberry vines will eventually die out.
Uh-huh.
And I think part of the attraction to people is those cranberry vines are really attractive. They change color all season. And so I think people would enjoy that, but that will change.
And, and kind of the, the next part of my question is i- i- in doing this, what happens like with dog walkers and things like that? If it's conservation land for this, there's a lot of dog walkers that go there. Are they still gonna be able to go there? Is that still gonna be preserved in those trails and everything?
Yeah, I, I mean, that's the objective. I don't know if you, you know, but, um, the working group has had a survey out, out, you know, paper survey plus now an online survey, um, uh, about the uses of the cranberry bog and what people like and, um, I don't know, over two hundred responses now.
Oh, well, I think it's over three hundred.
Over three hundred responses. Um, and one of the interesting things is the prevalence of dog walking is, you know, is the preferred activity. Um, the, the other thing that's interesting, which is off your, off your question, but I bring it up anyway, is that, um, a, a very large percentage of the visitors are not Carlisle residents.
I was gonna say, I've had some people approach me, think, why are you gonna go with it?
But it, it, it shows that, that, that the bog has, you know, regional significance or at least more than just, just the town. Um, and I think, I mean, as we go down this road and we have had some outreach, you know, to outside, you know, nonprofit groups, I think there are some opportunities for the town to, you know, engage people in a broader way, um, to help the town in managing and paying some of these expenses as we go forward.
And that was kind of, that was my la-, well, second to the last question. Um, what, what, what is the estimated, if, if we go down this path and we turn it into conservation land, what's the estimated annual cost to maintain it?
So we're presently spending twelve thousand, twelve thousand a year. And that's, um, you know, for maintenance of the, of the water control structures and the. Yeah, mowing and the, the, essentially the, the trails. Um, it's just a guess right now, um, but I think that if we do this plan, that the additional maintenance is actually going to be intermittent, meaning that, um, you would do, uh, tree removal possibly, you know, once every three years. Um, and, um, so I would hope that we could, you know, um, do this extra work and not increase the existing budget, you know, by more than ten thousand, uh, a year. So call it thirty thousand over a three-year period. That's a guess. Yeah, we need the, we need the plan in order to determine that.
And my last question is, you know, there's a lot of bogs being lost down in southern Massachusetts with, you know, obviously they're all going out of business. Is this a one-way thing? What if, what if it changes? What if the market changes? Is it possible to make it a bog again? If somebody came in and said, hey, I wanna do it, you have this bog?
They've come up with new cultivars, so you'd have to replant the bog in new cultivars and pay for conversions to update it. And then for Mark, what's made it worthwhile is that he rents all the equipment that he needs from all the other bog growers. And the whole energy's just been consolidated. So if it comes back, it's largely gonna be a operation where people are, have the capital investment to bring the cultivars in that are new. And then secondly, the Canadians are subsidizing their bogs.
Mm-hmm.
It's an American bog.
Yeah, so, so I get there's the whole economics of whether or not it makes sense for cranberry bog farmers to do it. But in what we're doing it, are we precluding, let's say the economics do work. Are we precluding, because it's being put into conservation land, are we precluding it going back into agriculture? it going back into agriculture?
So, from a regulatory aspect, the answer is basically, yes, you're precluding it. You know, it becomes, it becomes new agricultural activity, and that's an entirely different, you know, category under the, under the Wetlands Protection Act. So I think, for all intents and purposes, you should assume that once the agricultural use is gone, it's gone.
Barney?
Yeah, I'm just wondering about the bog house, is it included in what you're discussing?
No.
Okay. And...
And that's a whole other, you know, a whole other ball of wax, because if, if the agricultural use goes, and it's not an adjunct to some, you know, agricultural operation, you know, I suspect you wind up with another highland building kind of situation where it's difficult to find a permitted use without substantial upgrade of the building.
Well, it could be affordable housing, I think.
Or maybe a co-working space.
Or a co-working space, yeah. I think there's things that could be used for.
Yeah, so that's, that's not...
Outside, what the funding would be, the plan would be developed, okay?
But that would be not precluded, I guess the question is, is, wouldn't be precluded by, from that plan.
So the land that the bog, the house is on would go under conservation? But the bog house would be, or would it be, it would be a building envelope, or whatever you call it, that would not be under conservation?
So, I mean, just to be, I mean, I know we've been using this terminology of it becoming quote-unquote conservation land. What the notice of intent would do if allowed, and an order of conditions issued, is simply to permit, you know, the habitat maintenance and enhancement activities in the bog. It doesn't change the legal status of the title to the bog, or the building, or how it was acquired, or, or anything like that. If, if the building were to be taken out and put to a different use, there may be some, you know, legal steps that would need to be taken, maybe Conservation Commission has to declare that it's surplus to its needs, I mean, but we haven't...
I'm wondering if it would be smart to do an ANR, or some, or some sort of parcel delineation, just to separate it out so that we don't have that problem down the line, because it's a town asset, and we'd hate to not be able to develop that asset if we saw a need or desire to develop it, because it's suddenly on, you know, land that is not, you know, that that's no longer a permitted use. So I would certainly advocate to have that parceled off.
I'm not, I'm, I'm confused now. Is there, is this, is there an actual change in designation of the type of land?
Not as a result of this notice of intent.
Right.
That's what I was trying to...
That was my question, is it coming out of agriculture? And the answer was yes.
Well, it's coming out of agricultural use.
Just because it's not, there's no agriculture going on?
Yes.
It's ambiguous, and the state will permit some level of ambiguity for some period of time, but eventually, without agriculture, somebody would declare it no longer agricultural? It's been three years now?
For cranberries.
Cranberries, right. So it's still agricultural, even though there's been no cultivation?
Yeah, so the state regulations allow for one of a better year, a five-year fall on period. And at some point, somebody would raise, might raise their hand and say, "Well, you can't do that anymore."
Well, I guess, what, what is the, what would it be if you didn't do anything?
Of course.
In terms of designation?
Oh.
It's conservation land.
It's conservation.
And a wetland.
Which it is now.
Yes.
Okay.
And the flood zone.
One way to think of it, it is conservation land, but because there's agricultural use, it becomes exempt from many of the regulations that otherwise govern conservation lands.
My understanding from talking to the folks at USDA is they have three kinds of land, is wetlands, uplands, and land in agriculture. And that's how it, this gets exempt from some of the Wetlands Protection Act.
As, as non-agriculture, it just becomes wetlands.
Yeah.
Luke, you have any?
No, I'm on the committee, so. I don't go to every meeting anymore, but now I pretty much know what's going on.
Okay.
So...
What would you like from us tonight?
Well, we were responding to a subpoena. Tell us what you want from the house.
I'll explain it, this is a somewhat latecomer to our list of warrant articles.
Gotcha, gotcha. And so, we need to agree to accept it. Okay.
Agree to put it on.
Gotcha.
Is there anybody that's not amenable to putting it on?
I'm amenable to it, but it's, we didn't close it before the warrant? I thought...
No, it hasn't.
Okay.
The warrant's not closed yet.
No.
Okay. Because that's, that's...
That's the last thing.
The warrant.
It tried to close.
I tried to close it the last time, and I was told, "No." Okay, so, yeah. So, yeah. There, so we have no opposition to putting it on the warrant, and so it is now currently number, well, it won't be 37 forever, because all these others have come off, so it'll probably be around 33 or 34.
Do you wanna talk about the wetlands bylaw, too?
Yes, let's talk about the wetlands bylaw while you're here, because maybe we need to add another bylaw on there.
Oh, no, it's not gonna be ready for this year.
It's not gonna be ready for this year.
No.
Okay. You ran out of time. Okay, so, we don't have to talk about that. I'll just fill you in, though, that the CONSCOM is, has been reviewing their fees, and, and so they will probably be raising some of their fees. They would like to raise other fees, but they can't do it unless they've changed their bylaw a bit to, to...
Allow it?
To, well, to differentiate various kinds of, of, here.
So there are, there are application kinds of fees that we actually discussed and voted on at our last meeting. The, the current bylaw has some limitations on consultant fees, which we think are out of date, and really not appropriate to manage. So that's one, one of the items that we're proposing, and we've been reviewing and drafting and revise bylaw. More generally, I think the impetus for reviewing the bylaw has been that we spend a tremendous amount of time reviewing applications, and I would tell you that in the almost year now that I've been back on the commission, we've only ever denied one. And it was denied for procedural reasons, not substantive reasons, we had no, we had no choice. And it was an eminently approvable project. The, the problem that we face, and why a lot of these things are taking so much time, is that there's kind of inadequate guidance in the present bylaw. And so we think we can streamline a lot of the application processes by dividing them into categories, and, and saying, "Look, if you, if this is what you're doing, you know, presumptively, we're gonna say yes, unless there's some, you know, unforeseen circumstance, but this is what you need to do in advance, so that when these applications come in, we're not sending them back and saying, "Well, you gotta do this, you gotta do that, you gotta..." Look, it's all there. And so, we think we can make the process a lot more user-friendly. And at the same time, we think there are some areas that are inadequately regulated. You know, the Mass Association of Conservation Commissions and DEP have issued, you know, scientific studies as to what you really should be regulating in the buffer zone that we don't regulate right now, except by agreement with the applicants, because we don't have the authority on the bylaw. So that's another, you know, impetus that we're looking at, so.
We've, just to add something, we've looked at, you know, dozens of other towns similar in size or nearby us, and kind of compared what their local bylaws provide, you know, it's, you know, it's supposed to be somewhat more restrictive than the Wetlands Protection Act, that's the point of having the bylaw, and, and ours is clearly, you know, lacking in, in a lot of the protection of additional resource areas that aren't protected by the state. So, just, just in becoming, you know, close, or similar to what other our neighboring towns are doing, that's, that's one of the things we're, we're starting with to look at. But as Alex was mentioning, there's been a lot of, a lot of scientific research of studies on the effects of wetlands, and so, so we're incorporating all that into our, our planning.
And are you also thinking about, you know, climate change, and sustainability, and disaster preparedness?
There's a climate change resiliency aspect, yeah, that's, that's something we're looking at as well.
There's this new program of municipal, municipal program, that the state has on that.
Let me ask you this also, if we were to, I mean, 'cause I think the planning board's not totally 100% ready with theirs, you're not ready with some of yours, I'm wondering if we should be considering a fall, if it would be helpful if we were to consider a fall?
I think we'd be ready by the fall for certain, certain...
Rather than have to wait a whole year for this. What do you think, Nathan, about...
I, I think as long as there's something we can put on a fall that actually draws people to it, I just don't, I don't think that bylaw amendments are gonna draw people...
I think marijuana might, that, which is why I was thinking.
Well, we also may have something...
And yet, not prolong this other...
Yeah. I, I don't, I don't think marijuana would be the draw, I mean, less we're serving it.
But also the master plan...
Put it in our bylaw.
The master plan, you know, will be done, the idea is, it's, it's the plan, it was to be completed in September, so there could very well be some...
So, and then there would be the master plan as well, which then also would dovetail with bylaws, so. I'm, I'm just putting that out there because...
If something comes up that I think it would make sense to do a fall one, and we could get these done.
Yeah.
Well, the reason I'm bringing it up is I don't want you to say, "Oh, well, we have a whole other year," and then we spring this fall thing on you, and you're still not ready.
No, we get about 70% of the way there, and then just the schedule fell apart.
Yeah, okay, well...
For, for this town.
Yeah, and, and, correct me if I'm wrong, but another part of this bylaw is gonna actually be to, you know, address the fees and structure the fees so they more appropriately account for the time that's spent on these, 'cause, you know, like, some of the quickie filings, somebody wants to take down a couple of trees 80 feet away from the wetland, you know, I mean, that's a pretty straightforward filing, you know, Sylvia goes out, does one visit, she comes back after it's done, does another, boom. But, you know, it's when you have these involved ones, where they're close to the buffer zone, or, I mean, close to the wetland, or in the wetland, or they take a tree down and it falls, you know, it's all that, that follow-up, I think, that, you know, that, that absolutely kills the timing. And, you know, and these projects are more complex, and they should be charged accordingly. You know, I, I think you guys are gonna restructure the fees.
What we did this time, we've been in contact with Luke, because we are interested and have approval from personnel, we're increasing the hours for our administrative assistant, and she also got a great change. And Luke had said, you know, that you folks were, seemed supportive of that, but to increase our fees, so the Conservation Commission said, "Let's increase our fees." And we've been through that process, held a public hearing in our last meeting, the fees have been increased, I guess the lowest increase was 17%, sort of accounted for the increase in wages from 2014 to now. And higher, the other fees went even higher than that, but...
And those are effective as of yesterday, right?
Yes, they posted on the website. The first thing I did after we got the thing up was I sent it off to Sam's Canadian Mary so that they would know. So they are effective now. And once we come up with our new bylaw, we can look at a more comprehensive review, but this was just to get something in place to increase the fees. It was time, though the last ones were done in 2012 or so.
Yeah, I was on the...
Yeah. It's a lot of work to go through that, and they really didn't want me to spend a whole lot of time on it, so, for something that would be for a year.
Yeah.
Yeah, and this would then bump those fees again because of the...
There'll be some structural changes very likely in the bylaw.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, and even as the fees stand now, they don't really, you know, adequately cover the amount of time spent on most of the, most of the bylaws.
You know, it's one of those things, you just don't know.
Right.
It can be the simplest-looking project, and something goes afoul, and, and it's totally unacceptable, unanticipated, and then another more complicated project might just go as smooth as anything, but...
Yeah, and, yeah, so...
We, I was gonna say, we had a filing that took place on a street, it didn't have a direct impact to a well, and there have been all kinds of complications on that one, so it's, I can't count the site visits I've taken out there.
Yeah, yeah, and then also, as Alex mentioned, you know, a lot of the other boards have mechanisms to hire consultants, you know, CONSCOM doesn't necessarily have that.
We have a peer review thing, but...
Right, but it's, but like Planning Board or Board of Health, you know, just has funds and will hire consultants to get in, you know, on the more complex projects. I mean, Sylvia and this board is more than competent, but, you know, it'd be nice if they could have some professional expertise come in as well.
Actually, the planning board does not have its own funds, it actually asks its applicants to post a bond.
Exactly.
And then they return whatever funds...
53G. We just, we have that for peer reviews, yes.
So we have the 53G, but another present bylaw, it's, what we can ask is limited, both in amount and the methodology requires that it be voted on by the commission...
Rather than just being...
Yeah, rather than, right. And so, I mean, that's one of the things we wanna change, is if it's a certain kind of application, it comes in, it's going out for peer review.
A peer review, and they'll have to post, you, you'll, yeah, okay. We have a peer review happening tomorrow, as a matter of fact. In the almost 20 years that I've been doing this here, we've denied three projects.
So it's just, you get to compliance through the, through the hearing process, but, you know, there's gotta be a, a better way to...
Regarding the fees, I think we've done what you asked, relate to us, is it possible to, for the selectmen to address our administrative assistant position at an upcoming meeting? And we will have a staffing discussion later on this evening, is that a net?
Well, you're having a coordination meeting with the Finance Committee on the 11th as well.
Yes.
But you meant tonight, on the agenda?
No, I don't mean tonight, I mean, it was on future. No, I'm just wondering. Yeah, we will be discussing staffing in general, so...
Yeah, so...
It will definitely get discussed.
Yeah, well, do you wanna wait to discuss it?
Yeah, because we have, because there's several that we discussed.
Yeah.
Okay, but, well, since this is the next thing...
No, actually, the next thing on agenda is supposed to close, but I, what I would like to do is, I think, I'd like to know if we are going to shoot for a fall town meeting, because I think that has some bearing on this warrant. meeting, because I think that has some bearing on this warrant.
I don't have any issue with fall town meeting, but as Nathan said, you know, I think.
Well, and that, yeah, but then Barney said that we may need it where we want it, or my, for the master plan.
Yeah, no, I, I think, you know, I, I think we need to just make sure we know what's lined up before I'll say yay to a town meeting, you know? I mean, I have no issue having one, but, you know, if the, if the master plan thing doesn't fall in place.
On the other, I mean, it's kind of the chicken and egg, because, well, okay, you guys are, are set, but I think, um, because you haven't, you're not ready, but it would be nice for you, as soon as we know, we will let you know.
I think the key is, though, if we're going to push things out, it's just making sure that we're pushing out things that if for some reason there isn't a fall town meeting, it's okay if it's addressed in this way.
Right, right, well, this clearly, their thing clearly is because they're not, they're not ready.
And it seems like most of these, if the town isn't going to fall apart, it, it had to wait, but we could plan on it.
Right, right.
We do have some momentum on this side.
And so, so it would help you, it's actually helpful to you because you don't, you don't die. And I'm just thinking, you know, there, I don't know why they didn't advance the photovoltaic facilities, um, just because they weren't ready, or they decided they didn't want it, or for the planning board, um, you know? Okay. We'll talk about that another time, and we'll let you know if we are going to do it in October or so.
So procedurally, when do we need to get language for the warrant article?
For this warrant article?
Usually, Tom Counsel and I will write a draft of, of the article, so you won't have to provide the language for it unless you've got.
I, I think I sent you it some time ago, a simple draft.
Yes, yeah, I think we're.
I'm figuring the town council would look at it.
Yeah, the quick answer is we're voting on final language on March 10th.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, but.
This is just to include it.
Yeah.
So it'd be, it would be helpful if we could after town council's comments, just to see, make sure it's consistent with what we're.
Sure.
If we're lucky, what happens.
Okay.
Yeah, this looks pretty, pretty straightforward.
Yeah, I think so.
It's like a force.
Compared to.
I don't know. It's always in the details, right?
Or not. That's the key with town meeting, less details when people go back, they go, oh, what was the intent?
I don't know.
So, I, I mean, I've been back and forth with you about maybe having a discussion with a selectman at maybe their next meeting about.
Right, so, so, well, we're just, sorry, no, so you just want to wait a, a minute, and we can start on the staffing? Yeah, so we're just going to close out this bit?
Mm-hmm.
So.
And then we're going to be talking about staffing. Is it okay with you? He's my chauffeur.
Oh, okay.
I'm still not driving yet.
Extra charge after nine.
You got six minutes.
This actually may take a while, right?
This is special?
No, the closing of, going through these and.
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, in closing, we're going to want to make sure that we want them on it, because when we close it, we can't take it off, right?
No, we can take them off, we just can't put any more on.
Right.
You can take them off and.
By not moving them.
You don't really need a formal vote if, if you'll agree that the universe gets no bigger than this.
Yeah.
These are the only articles you'll consider, you'll finalize the language on March 10th.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's a better way to do it.
But you won't accept anything between now and then.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, I just worry about, I just want to make sure that, you know, we, we can have warrant articles that we don't move, but it's really a bad idea because anybody could then move it.
That's right, which is why I'm.
So we just want to make sure that we don't have anything on, I'm more worried about taking things off of here than.
Yeah.
Adding them.
Okay.
About, like, I mean, are we, are we ready with D and E, the appointed town clerk, my three-year term for moderator?
We've got language for those already, but yeah.
No, but I meant just more in terms of discussion and understanding of town.
Just whip through all these and kind of get it.
All right, all right, uh, but we're going to start with 19, placeholder for Complete Streets Capital Project. You guys have not opened your bids yet, so we don't know.
Thank you.
February 7th.
That's the 7th. Okay, I'm going to read through them, stop me if there's one you want to discuss. The new CETF revolving fund or continuing appropriation.
What's CETF?
Energy Task Force.
Yes, that's something that we still need to discuss.
Yep.
And I believe, we still need to have that discussion, and it's too bad that we didn't, that Kim is not here to talk about her reservations. Okay, that's, I'm going to, we'll come back to that one, possible bylaw amendments, personnel bylaw, what do we have on the personnel bylaw?
There was something that you were proposing.
Work on language.
That was, that, oh, yes. I was cleaning it up, we were taking out the, the confusing titles and references, making sure that everybody understood that, I mean, the TA is the.
Personnel administrator.
The personnel administrator, and he will be conducting all of the evaluations in conjunction with the chairs, the, of the, the commissions and, and boards.
So is this, do we think this is like an urgent thing, or could we push that to a fall or potentially spring one?
Uh, I think it's more urgent than next spring. I would be happy to put it off to fall, but I would not be happy to put it off to next
It's fairly important.
Okay, then I think we should put it in now, because we don't know if there's a fall.
Okay, um, and we can take it, put it in the fall if we have a fall one. We send the LTCRC bylaw.
We could, should cross that off, or, or put it in the fall if we decide to do it, because I, I do think that there's going to be, I think that there's still a lot of discussion around this, right?
Yeah, so we take this one off?
I just think we don't want to, or just, yeah, I would just take it off.
Or, or do it in the fall if we get to it.
Maybe fall if we determine that we need to do it.
Yeah, and how would it work?
I would just hate to have that hit the warrant article, and it's just going to make us look bad if we then don't do it, and.
Yeah, no.
It's like, oh, you're going to close something else, and then we don't do it.
It has to be nailed down.
Yeah.
Replace selectmen with select board throughout the bylaws.
Just a question about this, does this mean that we need to present every bylaw and the change?
No, town, we got the, no.
From town council.
Town council's language was, was very, uh, brief, and it basically was replace the term, or selectmen, or select board wherever it appears in the town bylaws, and that was.
Okay, so, and so we don't have to show where it appears or anything like that, like we normally would have to do?
Right.
That would just make for a very long night.
Yeah. Oh, my God. Yes, okay. Appointed town clerk.
Yeah.
Uh, I think is very important to do now if we can.
Yep.
And it's already going to be too late for the caucus and all this other stuff. Three-year term for the moderator.
Yep.
Uh, amend the Article 3 Officers, Boards, and Committees.
Not sure what that one is.
Either.
Town council's going through that section of the bylaw.
Yes, I bet.
Again, cleaning up inconsistencies and, and, uh, language that, that no longer is effective or clear.
Any questions on 21 then? So on 21.
Where's 21?
That's the one we're talking about right now.
Go back up.
There were all these little small sections, and we said the personnel bylaw.
Would stay in.
Would stay in, and the resent, resent that one, okay. 22, application of bond premiums, that's, Kim presented that to us last meeting, and we had no problem with that. Established capital stabilization fund, we had a discussion about it, but personally I think it's a good idea. Uh, 24, and, and that is just to establish the capital stabilization fund, but not, it doesn't.
Fund it.
Fund it, okay.
Okay? And I guess the question is, did we want to fund it as well? But that's something we should probably be talking to the FinCom about at our coordination meeting.
I think, yeah.
I think we should hold off.
When we, when we see what the budget is, we can decide.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, and, okay, but the question is, does that require another warrant if we were to fund it, or can we fund it under this?
That can be done with the same.
Okay. Raise income tax limit for tax deferral program.
Yeah, the recommendation there is to raise it to, right now it's 40K.
Yeah.
And the circuit breaker is now up at 58K, and so they're suggesting to raise it to 58 to 60K to give another year or two inflation. And at the same time, and it's not on here, but probably also lower their interest rate. Our interest rate is up 8%, which is very high.
Missouri.
So we should, so we should bring it down to three or four.
Yeah.
Are there standards that we could?
Yeah, well, you know.
As a circuit breaker, could we just say that we're going to follow the circuit breaker?
Could do that, yeah.
Is this something that, you know, it's kind of like the mileage rate, right?
Right, yeah, exactly, yeah.
I just don't know how much that fluctuates, that might hurt us if we.
I don't think it fluctuates much, it's kind of, it's kind of on a standard trend with, with cost of living and that sort of thing.
It would seem better to follow a standard than to.
It would.
Because the next time this is going to be looked at is 2059.
Yeah.
Yeah, good idea.
Yeah.
All right?
That's probably a good idea, yeah. So we use the circuit breaker, we should put it at 58 this year.
No, what we would say is, we don't put it at anything.
I understand, but that's what it would be.
Yes, yes.
If we, if we link it to the circuit breaker.
Right, right.
So we just need whatever the right language is.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Right. 25 is gone, the proposed fenced-in dog park. 26, accept MGL Chapter 32 S, 85 H and a half, about injured on duty firefighters. Do we know what that actually, that really is all about?
We, we.
We had a presentation.
We discussed this with Chief Fisher, uh, two meetings ago.
This is fire chief, but was it fire chief, or was it?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I think it is fire chief.
It is, I'm sorry, it was fire chief, yes, you're right.
Is it the same thing, but is it the same thing we did for the, for the police?
Yeah.
I believe it is, but I'll confirm that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Chief Soros.
Sorry, forgotten. 28, revisions to, okay, the medical marijuana, and that is something we still could ask whether they want more time, if they really want to go ahead. Designation of the scenic road.
I'm inclined not to include that until we hear back from them.
Yeah, yeah, we need to get a report on that.
Well, but, all right, but we're not going to take it off either until we hear from them.
Yeah.
Um, join East Middlesex mosquito control district, they're supposed to.
We'll know more Thursday.
Well, it's not till Thursday night.
Thursday, it's very expensive, and I'd like to know what the FinCom thinks about it. CCRSD Capital Project Parking Lot, 848K.
We get, we get to vote first this year.
Yeah, we do.
Can't we do two of those?
At the eighth graders park.
We know, so, and they're taking off, the COA is taking off two that they thought they would put on, um, in order to fund a staff position, to help.
Help fund the staff position.
Fund the staff position. Vanta Davis Telecommunications Tower, we just added last.
And that's just the lease, right?
Right.
That's just.
Authorization.
The lease authorization.
And then we just agree.
And it's not building the new one.
I think it's replacing the one that's there with a new one.
It's the ground lease.
Remember, we talked about it last time.
Yes, I know, but I was just wondering, okay. And Conscom request for cranberry bog NOI.
Yep.
On there, okay. Thank you.
So what are we saying about the mosquito control? We're going to vote to leave it on?
We're leaving it on because we have.
We're not voting tonight.
We're not voting tonight.
We're not voting tonight, okay.
I would not vote to put it on.
Yeah, okay. Got it. All right. So we're not voting to close the ATM warrant tonight?
No.
No.
No, we don't need to.
No. Yes?
Bob has a question.
Hi.
Bob Solinsky, 82 Acton Street, representing the mosquito. I've got a question about you dropping number 25. What does that mean?
25?
Dog park.
The dog park, the, um, the recreation commission are going for a private grant and have withdrawn the request for.
They're not going to ask for the money.
Thank you.
Welcome back, Bob.
Yes.
Good to see you.
We double team you tonight.
Yes. All right, grants position discussion and discussion of hiring policy. Who should we start with then? Yes, well, you're here. Yeah.
You guys are still.
You guys are here. So, you have a position, an administrative assistant position who has been re.
Twice. She's been approved, well, the position has been approved.
Right.
With 35, uh, for, I think, three years now. And the grade changed to grade six has been approved two years now. And there's a lot of work to do. We're a very busy department. And Luke had corresponded with me in the fall, or actually, very late fall, that if it might be, uh, if we recommended that we increase our fees, and that the board was, appeared to be somewhat supportive of this change. And so we've done that.
Okay. I, I just want to explain, I think our, you can stop me if you think I'm misspeaking, but, um, if the work has expanded and you need to spend more time doing it, and you are charging fees, we felt that the taxpayer shouldn't be subsidizing those functions. And that's why we wanted those fees to be raised to help defer the cost of that extra time. We understand that you need, we were totally sympathetic to, but we weren't wanting to subsidize it if there was another way of paying for it, you know? And then, of course, whatever is not being demanded from those projects, then we would, that's demanded by other parts of the town, then we would pay for that. So we want to just make sure that we understand that those outside pressures are being paid for by the outside pushers.
Right, yeah, the fees should cover the, the cost of the work and the time that it takes to do it. I mean, and obviously, it, it can't go 100%, right? Because obviously there's.
Absolutely not.
Right, there are town programs and whatnot, but, but, you know, just a more accurate representation of what, you know, the time that you guys are actually spending on, I mean, like the Deer Committee was a perfect example, right?
Yes.
It, um, you know, if it takes X amount of hours and you bring in, you know, Y amount of dollars, right, you do your simple division and go, oh, that's not working, right? So, so there are things like that, you know, I think the bylaw fees are a little more tricky. Um, and I think we all understand that, it's just, you know, if, if the fees are too low. Like, for example, Board of Health, what they did is they said, okay, this is the dollar amount we've got to make, this is how much, you know, we bring in for a new septic, right? They're a lot more clear cut, right? This is how much we bring in for a new septic, right? We can charge X amount more and bang, that covers our difference, right? You guys are a little different, um, you know, and, and I think, um, you know, just You guys are a little different, um, you know, and, and I think, um, you know, just from, you know, my discussion with Sylvia, uh, you know, this initial change will bring in probably about half, about thirty-five hundred of what, um, the, the cost increase would be for, you know, increasing the hours and increasing, um, the grade. So, yeah, I think part of the hope is that, you know, when they can do the full restructure, um, you know, they can bring those numbers in even tighter, uh, and, and, uh, you know, but then, of course, we have the additional request on top of that of a succession plan.
I was just gonna say, I was gonna ask about the succession.
Which, which I think, you know, we're looking for probably, you know, twenty-five to thirty-hour position, um, that, you know, will not take the place of our administrator, can do a lot of the work that our administrator can do so that, so that our administrator can go on vacation. Uh, but also, too, that the, that, you know, the office is, is, you know, fully staffed, competently staffed when people come in and have questions. Um, you know, and I think you guys do as best you can now, but it, there's an hour shortage, and especially when you have difficult projects to pull you out, it, it complicates things. Um, so, part of it is, yeah, they, so, obviously, the, the fee change as it stands right now doesn't fully cover, um, the increase that they're asking for, you know, I think, um.
At this point, we, we don't know.
Yeah, I mean, you don't know exactly, but I.
And on top of that, the, some of the fees were actually increased from what I had originally sent you.
Oh, good.
Yeah, very increased Thursday night, higher.
Oh, even better.
By the, by the board, so I haven't done an analysis yet.
Right, right, so I think, I think really the next step, you know, we, we talked and, and I think they're gonna get close with that, and then maybe there's some creative, um, maneuvering of the existing budget. Cause really, what I, what I think we would like is the line item, you know, the, the line at the bottom is staying the same, right? Or pretty darn close. Um, you know, and while obviously, you know, there could be half the filings there are this year that there were last year, it's probably not likely, but, but you know what I mean? It, um, you know, there's no guarantee that the funds are gonna come in and, and cover that exactly. One thing that's different with ConsCom is you guys don't have a fifty-three and a half. Everything goes right into the general fund.
Uh-huh.
Um, you do have that other one, the.
We have a fifty-three G.
Fifty-three G.
And then there's the, um, the special fund called the Intensive Town that cucks. The Wetlands Protection Act's fees and they have to go, and we already use those to supplement.
Right.
And get, uh, three hours a week for, uh, my assistant's position.
Right, right, and that's, that's just.
And there isn't really any more there to use, I mean.
Nothing more in the fifty-three G either?
Oh, the fifty-three G doesn't go to us, it goes to pay for peer reviewers. In fact, there is some funds in it right now that would be paid for, this happening tomorrow morning. And anything that's left over and not spent that's in there that was paid for by the, um, applicant goes back to the applicant. Doesn't, is not town money.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
And that's on a, uh, twenty-four acre site on South Street tomorrow. Um, and that will likely be bringing, uh, at least one, probably a subdivision road and some lots, I don't know what's planned yet at this point, no way of knowing, but.
Land for sale, some.
Cross from Bedfield?
Pardon?
That's the one across from Bedfield?
It's not right across, but it's on the, it's on the opposite side of the road.
They had a sign up there.
Yeah, yeah.
So I guess I was just, can you give us a little more guidance on the succession plan, what, what information you're looking for?
Um, yeah, so, you know, Sylvia the other day actually sent me kind of the, it was at the number two in Concord, right? So basically, we're looking for somebody who's more than, in a sense, just an administrative assistant, right? There, really, I think the, the term is the assistant to the administrator, um, is typically the, the phrase used.
And that's what that grade six description for the, that was approved by the Personnel Committee for my administrative assistant, I sent, it was a red line document that I sent you. And that was what was approved, and that does do, that does do more than the administrative assistant.
Right, exactly, exactly.
I wanna play on words here.
Bringing, it brings a person along, so they're learning all the aspects of, not just whatever they're doing, but they're also learning what Sylvia does.
Right.
So that they could eventually step into our shoes if, if necessary.
Right, right, if they so choose, if she ever retired, but she better not.
Or if she takes a vacation.
Right.
She, you know, we're not.
The work doesn't stop.
The work doesn't stop, because we have somebody now who has enough, um, self-confidence and, and skills to, to be able to fulfill.
I, I will say that, um, Mary does a fabulous job when I'm gone, and I was gone almost three weeks, not this past summer, but the summer before, and got, um, a very good report back on everything that she did, everything that I needed to do, and, um, things went, I think, fairly smoothly, and at least this time with Dan, it didn't break, but that has happened when I've been away on vacation, Dan's break, and things move along and get picked up all right.
So what's the lesson we learned here? No vacations.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, actually, I did have. Uh, remember to report that to our benefits committee.
Yeah, no, and, and the point here is that, you know, you're not necessarily changing a position so Mary doesn't have a job, right? I mean, you're just, you're modifying a position so, so, you know, one, the individual in that position gets compensated accordingly, but also, two, that, that, you know, they really meet the needs, you know, because the, the problem is we're a small town, you know, we can afford two people in, in every group, you know, planning board has two, board of health has two, you guys are gonna have two. Um, you know, we can't afford that third, right? So you really need the number two to, to, you know, be competent enough to, to do most of what the number one can do. Um, and then, as Kate said, you know, if, if Sylvia ever decides to retire, or, you know, I mean, Sylvia will retire at some point, and then we gotta think down the road, right? There's gonna be another Sylvia who will stay on for twenty-plus years. Um, but then you wanna have, you know, you wanna have that continuity, right? And, and, um, we just don't have that in any department right now. Um, yeah, maybe police and fire, but.
I, I will say the, uh, the, um, job description that was approved by Personnel Committee, there's a lot on there that isn't in her, the current position, that she actually does. So, I mean, that was one of the reasons for getting the approval for the.
So are, so are we, I'm not sure what we're being asked to do, both approve the new description?
Well, they, the Personnel Committee already did that, the, the question is whether or not the, um, the extra hours and grade change could be approved for this, this coming year.
Right, it's the funding.
It's the funding, okay.
Right, so.
So we've been moving since, you know, last spring to get to here, and, and I don't know why it's taken this long, but it has.
Money. Well, it boils down to money.
Well, so that comes down, so do we know how much money we're talking about?
Yes, that's.
Yeah, so, so, um, yeah, I mean, I think it may make sense to do a, a larger presentation down the road, and I, I, I think we should probably talk, um, a little bit more before then, uh, but I think it was, it was like seven thousand without the grade change, just the hours, right? And then like seventy-four hundred with the grade change and the hours.
I need to get you the, the real numbers.
Yeah, but.
Yeah, we'll work some out, sort of back of the envelope.
Yeah.
And give them to.
Yeah.
But I didn't speak with personal yet to get an exact number of days that we're talking about, cause I was just trying to get sort of the ballpark.
Right.
Okay, okay. So we would like to have that, that, we'd also like to have what you're kind of guesstimating, you're gonna be, um, difference that you're gonna be.
Right.
Bringing in with your fees.
It will be a guesstimate.
And what the, yeah, I understand, and what the delta would be.
Yeah. Yeah, and one, I think, too, you know, is we, we can maybe look at the budget, too, and, you know, I know there's not a lot of wiggle room in it, um, but, you know, I mean, uh, maybe there are ways that we can constructively work within that budget, too, to just say, cause really, we gotta think of this as really just a one-year fix, right? Um, uh, sort of stopgap, right? It's, um, but basically, like a one-year solution, and then, you know, with the, with the bylaw changes and with all of that, you know, then we'll have to readdress, you know, exactly, you know, where that money comes from, right?
And there may be, we don't know, but I know there is discussion about reorganization of the land use committees and, and.
Right, so that's, that's a whole other.
So, who knows, the whole thing might.
So I don't, I don't get what you just said, Luke, so what we're doing is?
Why do you call it a stopgap?
Yeah, I mean, you, you can't change their hours yet, I mean, you know.
No, 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 right.
It's not a stopgap, it's.
Well.
We're funding it.
It's a change.
Right, it's a change, but it's.
Permanent change.
Right, right, so it's, it's a permanent change for the current position. Right, that position is going to change when we do the succession plan, right? So we may say that the position is thirty hours, we may say that it's thirty-five, you know, depending on how, you know, how we actually wanna, and obviously, it'll be a discussion with, with ConsCom as well, you know, exactly what do we need in that position? Um, and then, the other, you know, factor that's gonna play in is the bylaw's gonna change, right? And, well, perhaps the bylaw's gonna change, right, cause it still has to pass town meeting. Right? So, you know, if, you know, if it ends up being where, you know, we try to implement all these fees based on different, difficult filings, and town meeting says no, you know, that, that's a burden that I think the board's gonna have to bear, right? If, if town meeting says no, we don't agree to any of these changes, right? You know, we, we like everything the way it is, which has happened in the past. Um, you know, it.
But Tommy's not voting on that?
No, but they're voting on the bylaws.
Okay, well, that's different.
Right, so, but if you, if you structure the fees based on the bylaws.
Yeah.
Right, you kinda have to go back to the drawing room, right? Um, and, you know, and I think there's probably a way to do it, but it, but again, we're gonna be in the same boat where, you know, the, the fees that are charged for a certain type of filing, you know, may not always represent the amount of time spent on that filing.
Can we, can we just go back, though, for a second and?
Sure.
I'm a little confused about what is the, what is the issue at hand right now?
I'm, I'm confused, too, as to what we're being asked to decide.
Yeah, so.
Nothing right now, nothing right now, so, so.
Well, wait, so.
So what you would like, Bobby, you would like back, you like be on, then, on another agenda.
Mm-hmm.
You would like a, a costing of, yes.
Right. For, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, Luke, because I had this conversation with you this morning, and what I had understood was that there's an adjustment of fees now, which will create a certain delta between that new position and, um, what they can afford to contribute to that new position and what we, we would need to kick in. But they would like to increase the fees even more based on a different bylaw structure and, which would then probably, which could possibly help that delta. Offset that delta, that upset, that delta, so this is.
But have we already, is the?
That's correct, yeah.
The increase in the cost, uh, based on the increased hours, is that currently in the proposed budget for ConsCom that, that the Finance Committee is working with? Are you saying there's gonna be an additional expense that, that you want us to approve that then, and you, are you going to FinCom as well?
Well, so, so this is, this is the whole thing, you know, we need to approve it, right?
We being the board.
Being the board, right, so. So I think this is where we've gotten into trouble in the past, is people will tell FinCom, FinCom will tell people, sure, we, we support this, and then they'll come out and say, well, FinCom supported it, but it's, we're, we're the ones that make the financial decision.
Yeah.
Not FinCom, I, I appreciate all the support, everything that they do, not knocking it, but, but ultimately, we're the final decision makers, right? So, um, over the past few years, it's been, I think it's been approved by us, but it hasn't, we, we haven't figured out a way to make the money work. Um, so, right now, it's an increase in, how many hours? It's five or seven hours is the.
So she is now at thirty hours.
Yeah.
With three of them paid for by the Wetlands.
Yeah, but it, but it's thirty to thirty-five, right?
So it would be on the, under the general fund, it would be an increase to thirty-two hours with three being picked up by Intensive Town to make the third back.
And the, and the.
Five more hours coming out of the town budget.
The complication is that the, we were advised to increase our bylaw fees, we have done that.
Yeah.
The issue is they go to the general fund.
Right.
So we don't accrue those unless they're part of some fifty-three E.
Put into their budget.
But we don't have a fifty-three E, let's hope, Luke, that you folks are planning to move.
Well, that's a much larger discussion, no, so, so whether or not it goes into a fund or the, or the, or the general, you know, the general fund or a fifty-three E and a half is, right now, the increase in fees is about thirty-five hundred, the, the back of the envelope calculations, about thirty-five hundred, the back of the envelope calculations for the position change is about seventy-five hundred, seventy-four hundred, right? So there's a.
So we're on the hook.
Delta of about four thousand.
We're on the hook for four K.
Right. And I think there's probably a way to creatively to move some money in the, in, in their current budget, right? Um, but I don't know if we're gonna get to that full, so I think we just need to, we need to finish our discussion before.
Figure out that amount.
So we're, we're, what we're funding is an increase in hours and an increase in grade, is that correct?
Correct.
And all we did, all of them we need to know is how much money does it take to do that?
Yes.
Yes.
And I, I can get that.
Right. Yep.
That I can get.
Yeah.
What's wishy-washy is what kind of funds would come in from the bylaw fees.
Right.
Right.
Go to the general fund and how to recognize if that is an adequate compensation to the town.
Right.
Yep.
And, and because we don't, we don't have access to them.
But you have, but you have an estimate.
Right, exactly, much like Board of Health, I mean, they could have half the number of subjects.
We can track it within the general fund without any problem.
Yeah, uh, we track it.
Yeah.
In, in the office, but it's, um, that's not an issue.
And you can't contract, too.
Right, exactly.
Right.
Technology is wonderful.
Yes, sir, yeah.
All right. Okay, so we don't have to vote on anything relative to this tonight? You're gonna bring it back, um, when you have a?
Next, next agenda.
Yeah, I, I think we can pull something together, and I can try to call in, um, as well, but I think, you know, I, I think there's a way to make it work, I honestly do, um, um, we just have to sit down and actually, you know.
We're very.
Couple, couple, yeah, well, I, I have a job, too, you know, I mean, so, it's, it's one of those things where.
Yeah, there's a lot going on right now.
Oh, yeah, no, I, I don't, I don't think anybody is, is, you know, denying the fact that, you know, you need the hours, I mean, I think everybody needs the hours, it's just, you know, I, I think we can make this work, we just need to sit down and, you know, hash it out exactly, and then present it and boom, 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 I mean, it'll be fairly clear cut, or, either you make it or you won't, right? But I think we can get pretty darn close. Uh-oh.
All right.
All right, time to move along.
We're gonna move along. Thanks, you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay, well, that's not the only staffing discussion we have.
No.
Well, right?
She O A.
Is that the only staffing one, one we're having tonight? I mean, are we, cause it says staffing discussion. We have the other, the other hiring policy, but that's a different subject.
Right, well, I mean, it, it's really a matter of the board's priorities, I mean, there was some desire to support the Board of Health and the Council on Aging last time, and we had.
Yes.
And that's, and that's, that ask has been decreased.
Right, right, Board of Health is.
Right. Board of Health has gone to zero and, and COA has gone down to ten.
Right. Yeah, is it ten or is it?
It's ten.
Okay.
Right, we, I met, I met with them.
Okay.
Last week.
Yeah, cause we didn't have a firm number, so.
Yeah, well, they, they were talking twelve originally.
Yeah, yeah.
And we said, let's, ten is a nice round number.
Yeah.
There's no question the work is there.
Right.
Uh, that, that population is dramatically increasing, uh, and, and we don't have accessible within the town expertise where you just call in a, a professional consultant to handle the problems these people are having, so it has to be handled by the COA.
Yep.
And they may be, they may be overdoing it, I don't know, and I've talked with them about that, but, uh, but there's, it certainly is sufficient justification for those hours.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I don't know about other folks, well, I know Barney Ukefor, but, you know, there's been significant feedback in the community about support for.
Yes, well, that's, that's to be expected, but it's.
Yeah, they're good at organizing the constituency, but.
It's also reasonable.
But they, but it's still important.
So why shouldn't they?
Yeah.
I mean, why should they lay back and say, well, we'll just wait for people to do things for us?
And frankly, it's, it's not a lot of people who, who are, who are creating the time demands, it's, it's often a couple of people.
Yes, yeah.
Uh, but they're, it's impacting police, it's impacting fire, uh, and EMS, and, uh, and it, I think it's, it's at a point where, uh, we can't just say suck it up anymore.
So I, I have, I have a request, um, so, you know, we started, we started this way back, I think, in November, right, where we first went through and we said, yeah, we're gonna do this, no, we're no, no, yeah, yeah. Would it be possible for us to just get a spreadsheet of all the positions and what we said initially?
Mm-hmm. It's easy what we said initially, no.
And, and because some of them were revisiting, I just wanna make sure that, we need to look at that big picture again and make sure that we're not creating any other problems, um, because we were very careful about why we said no to things. Um, and I think that there's some, you know, creative ways of trying to fund everything, but that brings me to my next thing that I wanted to say, um, which is, I just want us to be really, really careful that we're not looking at these fees and these revolving funds, or whether it's going to general fund or whatever, as just a way of paying for the positions if other things are being squeezed out because of that. And so I think we just need to be really, really careful about that, but also, a question that I had for Tim was, is there a way that we can actually tie the hours to the funds that are coming in? And, you know, so what I worry is what happens all the time, right? If people come in and they say, hey, I'm gonna pay for this out of, out of this fund that I have, or, hey, I'm gonna get a grant, it's not gonna cost the town anything, you know, three years from now, they're gonna be back, and they're gonna wanna put it into their general fund. I mean, it's just, that's just the way it happens, and so if there's a way that we could tie it, then I would feel a whole lot more comfortable for it, cause as it stands right now, I'm, I'm not very supportive of these unless there's a way we can make sure that this is the way that it works and the, and it can't change. If their, if their fees incomes goes down, they're gonna have to cut back on hours, right?
Well, we, we will have to ask them to support, I mean, what, we've, we've approved these fees and we've approved the increase in hours on this based on what you told us the traffic would bear, okay?
Right, but is there a way to make that.
Cause they're averaging twenty-two new septic systems a year, if we only get ten.
Right.
Okay, then that, then everything drops in half.
Right, but is there a way to, like, formalize that, because, you know, we're, we're here for only three years, there's, you know, people transi- There's, you know, people transition, transition on this frequently, like every year. We're not going to be here then. And there, you know, there would be Board of Selectmen members here saying, oh, well, of course we'll have to do that. And then boom, the budget goes up.
There, yeah, because also, we don't, um, or maybe you do this, Kate, or maybe you and Alan, but there's no, um, sort of the board as a whole doesn't receive a financial report periodically or any accounting of things.
Well, we're supposed to get it annually.
Right, but I'm just saying, there's no kind of, there's no, yeah, we do get it, but there's no tracking along the way. Now, maybe the FinCom gets it, I don't know. But Tim, is there any, um, sort of quarterly way to just look at the quarterly? I, you know, I don't know.
Year-to-date.
They're reporting, yeah, the financial reports are available monthly by department, so.
But it seems to me it should be something that you, as town administrator, I would assume, would be looking at, or maybe you and Kim, right? And you, and you, you see, oh, this line is out of whack. Or this line is way under what we thought. And that should be fed to us, don't you think? Or some, I don't.
I want it, no, I did not talk to this woman about this, but you are saying exactly what I said at our financial planning meeting this morning. And I told Kim that. I said, you know, I would like to have a dashboard financials sort of report coming more regularly than annually. And I was told, well, it's available. It's like, well, I don't care it's available. I want it presented to me, you know, on a, on a regular basis. So we see year-to-dates.
I mean, I think it goes out on a monthly basis. I mean, I, it goes to the Chair of the Selectmen, Chair of the Finance Committee, myself.
Could it once, could once a month be included in our packet once a month?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay, then let's just do that.
Yeah.
Because I, I think we're all, and I remember.
Not for just our funds, but for the whole town.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I remember Carrie Kissinger asking it for that as well.
And, you know, Tim, I think part of that is, at least for me, I'm, I, I'm not familiar with all the specific ins and outs of the town budget. And, um, I'm not necessarily going to understand, you know, looking at one particular section, the significance of it. So I do think it would be really helpful to have you and Kim looking at those before the Board of Selectmen meeting, where we're going to see that monthly report and just, uh, you know, saying, you know, you should give a little attention to this section. And here's why. Because either we're way better than we thought we were going to be or we're overspending where we thought, you know? Something that is from a professional's point of view, what, how to, how to make sense out of what we're seeing. What is that showing us?
Revenues, for instance, on, on fees have fallen below.
Yeah.
Uh, anticipated.
Or the, uh, you know, the, the, suddenly the recycling market has changed significantly and we're getting X amount of money in. I mean, that's such a teeny thing, but you know what I mean? Or that the school, you know, the school has, has received five new students, all of whom require, you know, X special services.
Well, that.
And we have to increase.
That.
Don't we get cha, don't, we don't get noticed, we don't get any information from the school committee?
From the, the, it's more on a bottom-line basis with the school.
Yeah.
But at the line item though, right?
Yeah, I mean, you, you can see it, but, you know, we, we don't have any real.
We can see it though.
We can do anything about it.
We can go ask them if we want.
We can ask them what it, what it means.
As we're citizens.
I wouldn't want to.
I'll talk to Kim and Priscilla about presenting that to the board. Over the past several months, it hasn't happened on maybe as regular a basis as, as it did in the past. But, you know, we can make that directly available to the board.
And then just put, put it on the agenda for.
I don't want a lot of, personally, I don't know, maybe you guys might want more detail. I don't, I want, don't want to be in the weeds. I don't want every single one of them. I want categories. I want wherever they win, wherever they go out, um.
Well, once we see it, let's, let's see one and we can decide whether it's out or not.
All right, there you go.
Yeah, yeah, and, and I honestly, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Oh, no, I honestly think, so some boards are fairly self-sufficient, right? So I think Board of Health is, I think, you know, John, Mativir, I think, you know, I, I think those boards bring in a lot of fees. I think Conscom, for example, you know, I think they brought in sixteen thousand dollars worth of fees last year, right? Clearly doesn't cover the salaries. Um, but there's additional stuff that they do, right? Managing all the open space that the town has chosen to, right? So there, it, there may be a way to kind of, you know, rob from rich and give to the poor. Um, you know, and if, if, you know, one department kind of ebbs and flows, you know, then, you know, maybe that's a way that they get compen, covered in a year.
Well, that's, you, you do that by deciding what, what is fee-based and what goes into the general fund.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. So I think.
You distribute the wealth in the general fund.
Right.
If you, if you're running a, a board that, that can be sustained by fees they charge, then that's a good way to fund it.
Exactly, exactly.
You're in the general fund.
Right.
And it's, it's really pretty simple.
Yeah.
Right, but, but what I'm saying too is that, you know, you got to look at it overall as well, right? Like, you know, we need a Conscom, we need a Board of Health, we need these, right? But if, if ultimately you see that, you know, the fees are way down because they don't have the filings, whatever department it may be, then yeah, maybe you decide to cut back, right?
Or.
If the police department doesn't get funded by far, parking fines.
Or, you know, or the other part of that is, which is what, um, Madeline was, was presenting in her, you know, initial thinking about the land use groups is, um, maybe it's, it's the, uh, it's the staff time that's now available in one department to do work in another department or to cross, you know?
Yeah.
Um, or collaborate or whatever, so that you, you make the, that, uh, part of Town Hall just work more efficiently.
Oh, yeah, no, I, I couldn't agree more with that. That is going to be very hard to implement though.
I know, but I.
Working with each of these boards. And I'm not saying we shouldn't do it and we can't do it. There's just going to be a lot of resistance. So we've got to be ready for that as a board, you know? And, and.
And I think it's going to come out in the master plan, in a bigger way even. There's a lot of interesting stuff that the, the consultant is just, you know, from a very quick, this, this was, you know, a couple of meetings ago. But looking at the way, um, the town boards and, and staff function, which is not as sort of an overall coordinated team, right? It's very much.
Very silent.
Yeah, and, um, and I think there's, I think there's going to be compelling evidence for making those hard choices and moving in a more coordinated, organized, structured way of operating town government where there are shared goals and shared priorities. And then there are people with different skill sets, right? But it's not going to, I mean, I'm, I'm really both excited and I know it's going to be difficult, but I'm really excited to think there could be some major efficiencies from all of that.
Yeah.
Yep.
But, and I think we need to be also aware that Tim is going to have to be kind of the leader of that new team.
That's right.
And we may need to be finding help.
Each staff is so tiny.
For Tim and Jen, um, yeah.
Or, or somebody's job description changes a little bit, right? To provide some assistance.
Yes.
Yeah, but yeah, a lot to think about. Okay.
You know, and, and just, I got to throw this in there. Another thing we've really got to focus on too is, you know, we, we pick at two grand here, five grand there. You know, the, the school budget is huge.
Yes.
So a two percent increase, two and a half percent increase in the school budget, you know?
Uh, yes, yes.
You know, we knock that down to a percentage, we could wipe out all of these other concerns.
Yeah, so, that's.
I, I always feel like this side.
That's the elephant in the room.
Of the government is scrounging among the couch cushions, looking for quarters while this, while the school is sitting on the, on the cushion.
Yeah, and it's not.
So what, what, you know, I, I know this is a big, much broader discussion, but I, I think we need as a board to figure out a different way of, and I know there's some, you know, legal issues there and bylaw issues, but I think we can't just keep having it work out the, have it, have the relationship be what it is now. It's, I think it's got to change.
I think we get involved too late in the process.
We do, and I was.
You know, I think that we need to be, we need to be driving what the guideline memo says.
Yes, I, I agree.
You know, and I know that we were saying this, you know, months ago, but we need to drive that. We need to drive what we're looking for as a percentage increase. And anything beyond that has to first come to us for review before they even, you know? I, I think at, at this point, it's, it's kind of like, I'm not sure how we got to two percent with the school. Um, but we haven't talked about whether or not we agreed to two percent.
They started with three and a half percent.
Yeah, but that doesn't matter.
I know, I'm just saying.
It's like, the, the school budget has not been increased two percent, right? I mean, because we still need to weigh in on it.
Right.
Now, what we always want to try to do is go in in unison, right? You know, so it wouldn't be good if the FinCom was saying, we think it should be two. We don't support a zero.
Right.
Um, or a one or whatever, whatever it is. But a two percent increase on the school budget is massive.
It is, and I.
And, you know, and we haven't had a discussion.
But I tried to open those discussions up when I talked about analysis of what would it look like with a zero percent? What would it look like with one percent?
But we need to have those discussions also here as a Board of Selectmen. Because you don't, you know, alone, you don't represent the Board of Selectmen. So we need to, we need to, you know, be driving that as, as a board. And, and make sure that it's understood where, where we're expecting it to be. Because I think, you know, I hope they don't think that we've approved it, right? Because we, we haven't.
No.
Right. And, and, and the thing is too, you know, we.
LTC, because I want to know what happened to the 80K that, that they usually have.
We didn't get, we didn't get very far on that at all.
Okay.
No, but the other thing too is like, we don't, you know, we can say, here's X amount of dollars. We can't tell them how to spend it, right?
No, we're not.
However, let them make the decisions on how to spend it. And if they spend it foolishly, shame on them.
Right.
You know, it's not.
Exactly.
You know.
Well, and they'll get a lot of pushback.
Exactly, right? And I, and I, I think we saw when we did the contract negotiation, you know, I mean, folks that I talked with, you know, and throughout town, you know, people with kids in the school, not in the school, you know, they all understand the school is a big-ticket item, you know? And two percent or four percent or whatever percentage you want to put on a salary is a, is a real dollar amount. And, you know, uh, we just can't do it, we, you know, as a town. We just can't sustain, you know, I, I don't want to say not paying attention, because we pay attention, but the status quo, you know?
Right, we just can't continue, right.
Because our growth isn't that, you know?
Right, right.
And, you know.
I think some fundamental questions have to be asked, right? And I know, Kate, you and I have talked about this going back to last May, you know? I, I, I think, I think that the Chair, the Vice Chair of the FinCon and the Board of Selectmen and the school need to get together and, not saying we're cutting the budget, but do a what-if, right? I mean, we're, we're getting to the point where, you know, we may start really getting some pushback on this. And, um, because every one percent just gets a bigger and bigger number, right? And, um, and we're.
It's probably things on a percentage basis.
So, right, and so, and so, you know, I think that we need to have the Chair and the Vice Chair of each of the committees sit down and just do some soul-searching about, well, what would happen if we cut it? X amount or X amount or X amount? You know, what, you know, let's, let's not do the, the typical, you know, public budgeting. Well, of course, then we'll have to cut the, you know, all the.
The library, the scary, right, the threats.
Just one little bit of, it's not a cut, it's a smaller increase.
Yes.
So that's another thing. So, you know, we tend to use the term cut as a whole, cut the budget, you know?
Well, no, but I was actually, but actually, that's, that's not correct. Because I was actually saying, what if we were to cut it?
Oh, you want to cut it, okay.
You know, and, and then what if, you know, and then what if they increase? You know, just like, let's just do the scenario.
Actually, an increase is a sort of a cut since we, if the, um, is a two percent cut in certain respects, since the teachers are getting two percent. And not by zero increase is a cut.
They'd have to decrease somewhere.
A cut in services.
Yeah, but I can, I can tell you that when we were going through that, we were saying, we're not increasing your budget two percent because of this.
Right.
Right, exactly.
We were very clear.
Going through the contract negotiation.
Right, we were very clear. This does not mean your budget's going up two percent.
Yeah.
Right, because that, that agreement's through the school, with the school committee and the teachers. You know, we were there as the money folks, right, saying.
And, and, and they heard what we said because they were saying it, right?
And so, I'm sorry, who is they?
The final.
The school committee.
School committee heard that.
Well, the people who were on the.
Okay, okay, I wanted to.
Representing the bargaining.
The antecedents.
Yeah, I just want to finish what I'm trying to say.
I know, but I had to stay with what you're saying.
The, uh, well, now I've forgotten it.
I'm sorry.
Uh-oh.
Well, you were saying that you, they understood that.
Well, no, I was talking more about the budget, the, you know, the, the, oh, the other thing is, is just taking a step back and, uh, and talking about, you know, like, we want to, we really want to have a top school in the state, right? We really want to have that. What does it take to do that? So in other words, is all, is, is our incremental spending for new programs or, you know, new hours or new math teachers or new, whatever it is, is that moving the needle for us to be a better school? Or are we just spending the money?
We can't answer that.
They can't.
We can't, but that's, that's their, that's their business, right? Is understanding program and education.
Of course, they'll say it's to make it a better school.
Yeah, but only at, at what point, like, if we're number two, do we want to be number one? So do we want to spend the money to make it a better school to get number? What's our goal?
Well, it's to provide the best possible education for the students. I mean, you know, that's.
But then, but then, then that's unlimited spending, right?
No, it's not, but it's, it's a, I mean, you know, in the, in the teaching world, you're trying to figure out what are the best practices and figure out how you can implement those in your particular school system and what it takes to do that. And it's not about, like, you know, the college, you know, the listing of the top ten colleges in whatever it is, US News and World Report. I don't, I don't think anybody on the school committee would say, oh, yeah, our goal is to get to be the number one in the state. But it is one of the ways that the school system is evaluated, is through all this testing. And do we want to be in the top ten the way we are now? Probably the answer is yes, right?
You go to, you go to first day of, you know, you go to parents' first day at the high school and their presentation is all about what, what, what rank they are for, for state.
But if you talk to the. But if you talk to the.
As part of the regional school district, which is all part of our school.
Right, but if you talk to the administration of the elementary school here, that is very specifically something they say is not what drives their, their decision making. Yeah. I mean, I really, I really can say that from both firsthand knowledge being a teacher there, but also from this visioning committee that I've been participating in. And it's never been the ethos of the school, of the elementary school, that it's all about where, the testing and where you end up, you know, in the state rankings. It's, it's really much more about the quality of the teaching staff, and the, and the curriculum, and best practices, and understanding that you need to adapt and change as we learn more, we do more research, and as the student population changes.
So then, how do we, how, how do we then, or is it at all possible to measure what the impact on that is at various funding levels?
Probably not.
Well, I, you know, I, I don't know, it's an interesting question, you know, one of the things, I, I'm not sure how these all interact, but, you know, there are some changes right now occurring across the country around, um, teaching methodology and grouping of students, and, you know, our traditional way in this country has always been by age, right? And you're in a classroom based on your age, and the classroom typically is an enclosed space. That our school, because there are some really strong, both teachers and administrators, I think, who are, are trying to, you know, be, um, familiar, make sure they're aware of these changes, and also thinking about our school and how, what that would mean for the school. They're seriously looking at, particularly for the older grades, eliminating, changing that way of teaching. And so, instead of group, grouping people by their age into a particular class, you're, you're, you're doing it much more, um, and, and you're taking down walls, and you're doing it much more by groupings of kids.
We did that, we did that in the sixties.
I know, you're thinking of the open classroom, but it still was by age. This is, this is very different, and it's really, um, you know, from an educational standpoint, it's, it's happening, it's gonna happen across the country, and. Well, I'm not sure it will, because of, uh, a lot of the changes in both, um.
When I was, when I was in elementary and high school, there were no age restrictions.
He went to a one-room schoolroom.
Everybody went to school together.
Well, look how smart you are, see?
It was a horrible one, I almost fucked out of college.
Well, I mean, that's, this is a part of a much more, it's bigger philosophical, but you're trying to get at.
What I worry about is, as this number goes from eleven million to twelve million, and we're still doing two percent, we're gonna make this town go bankrupt.
Right, well, absolutely.
There's a simple way to do it, if you, if we had the courage to do it. And that is, you say, okay, we're, we're gonna have a one percent increase in the tax base this year. So we're gonna, and, we don't care, so everybody is gonna get one percent. We don't care how you spend it, you decide that. All we, we, we're gonna, we're gonna appropriate thirty-four million, three hundred and seventy-five thousand, two hundred and twenty-two dollars and nineteen cents. And we're gonna divide it up in the same percentages that we did last year, live with it. We don't care how you spend it, even on salaries, you can spend it on Cadillacs.
What we would do, spend all of our time on that nineteen cents, right? Because that's what we do.
And by the way, so the town meeting.
Right, right.
Yes, yeah.
No, so, and that's what I was suggesting at the very beginning of this whole thing, is we need to be involved in what the guideline is.
Yes.
Right.
And, and, you know, i- i- whatever that increase is, you know.
It should originate.
The guideline was zero, wasn't it?
Yep, which didn't happen.
Which didn't happen, why?
Right, well, so then we need to ask, yeah, okay. So that's what we need to discuss with the FinCon when they come next, next time.
And I think we also need to put it, pu- put in front of everybody the notion that this summer, there're gonna be the, the discussions you're talking about between the school committee and the FinCon chair and vice chair and the board of selectmen, right?
You and I tried some of that.
No, but I, but I think in a much more organized way, yes, it's, it's, it's not, uh, dollars and cents at that point, but it's the, it's the fundamental discussion about what is sustainable here in town.
You guys, you guys talk to the school committee about this?
Yeah, I did. Yeah, but I think.
So there's types of things that, you know, we should talk about as a board.
At the very beginning, I, at, at last summer, I had a conference with, of course, at that point, it was Melinda Gambino and Christine, um.
Lear.
Lear. And, um, I said, I thought it was gonna be a lean year, and I wanted to talk to them and, you know, see if we could get things kicked off, you know, um, in amicable way, because I didn't want us to be in conflict, you know? Um, and that, I was hoping that they would be, and, and then I also brought up the fact that I had understood that there, there had been some prepayment of some sped the, the year before, while they were asking us to fully fund their elevator. Um, so they were spending, um, what I considered to be, um, excess and deficiency fund, and then making us, you know, asking us for additional funds as well. And that I thought that that was not gonna be sustainable, and the answer basically that I got back was, well, you know, uh, and I said, you know, the taxpayers are starting to push back, they feel that taxes are going, are getting too high, and they said, well, uh, but the schools are what keeps those, those property values, um, high. And that was kind of the end of the conversation. And, and I, I also said that I thought that the, this, this school committee needed to be aware that they needed to advocate for the schools to us, but they also needed to advocate for the town as a whole to the, to the, to the administration, to keep budgets, you know, reasonable, because they're not elected by just parents, they're elected by the entire town. So, that was my, my spiel. Now, um, while I was at the MMA last weekend, I did happen to take one of the breakout sessions called Creative, uh, School Financing, and their suggestion, and it's not like our problem is unique, it's all over everywhere. And their suggestion is that the TA.
Almonds.
Have regular conversations with the school superintendent, that it's peer-to-peer. And that's, that level is almost more important than us, us doing with the school committee, that you need, that you would need to be explaining to the superintendent where the town stands financially, what the, what the big picture looks like, what the problems are on the town side. Because, that, that's, that's the place to start, because they, he is the one that puts the budget together for the school committee.
This is why, I just think if it's, if it's, I think that if it's a board of selectmen sponsored chair, vice chair, with the other vice chairs, I think he can go a lot further, because then it's, hey, the board of selectmen, they wanna talk about this.
Yeah, but I, I think also that the.
Or you may do them both.
I think you have to do both of them, and it had never occurred to me to, to do the other part. So I think it would be certainly something worthwhile trying. Another thing to put on your list of things to do. Well, the, um.
You don't think we wanted to buy, or, or the MMA, is that what's, what's the real health insurance cost increases were? Retirement costs, and that type of thing.
Yes, um, yes, and that, yes.
Just one other point, I think that the feedback that we're getting from the kitchen conversations that are happening all over town for the master plan, um, you know, we've got, I think, sixty of them scheduled, and even if you figure it's ten people in a group, some of them have been bigger, you know, that's six hundred people. And, um, the, the school is, is, comes up in the, in one of the questions. So I, I think we will get quite a bit of feedback too, um, from the notes that are being submitted back to the steering committee from all these conversations, so.
The schools.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, the high school doesn't get talked about as much, but yeah.
Yes, well, because we don't feel we have as much, uh, all right. Um, I don't know if we have time to discuss hiring policy, well, we're done with staffing discussion? Well, for now, um, discussion of hiring policy, I put on there because I would, uh, I am anticipating upcoming, you know, um, staff changes, we might be hiring a, a town clerk at a certain point, we might be having a new, you know, PPW head, we might be having a new, you know, we, we know we're gonna have a new planning board head, and, um, before we engage on any kind of searches or, and hiring and, um, what do you call it, interviews, I think I would like to have a discussion about our policy around giving preference to any types of groups. For instance, do we give preference, will we be giving preference to veterans, disabled, um, diversity, uh, residents? Staff, um, and I would like us to have that kind of, um, discussed and agreed upon, and possibly even codified in, in policy, before we embark on the, the search, so that we don't have things cropping up, um, as we had with, well, for instance, the, uh, fire chief, where, you know, that kind of residency trumped all, and it was kind of a surprise to some of us. Um, so, I'm just putting that out there. Okay? Or thoughts and, and reactions, and I, we may not.
I think having really clear understanding as to, like, what the requirements are is really, really important. I think we just need to be really, really careful around what those requirements are, and make sure that we're not breaking any.
Sure.
Yeah, but, you know.
Well, so, it, so I'm, I'm tabling this for tonight, but I.
Labor laws, you mean, or?
Breaking, you know, it's like, depends upon, you know, it's like, I, I, I don't, you know, you, we can't have a preference on some things, like, we can't say we prefer that we're gonna hire women, or we prefer that we're gonna hire somebody who, uh, I don't believe we can say, you know, somebody who has a disability, I don't think that we can say that we're gonna do that, right?
Oh, absolutely, I think we can, but I think we need.
The county council's looking at various policies to see what.
Yeah, I mean, I know federal certainly has, um, gives, you know, if you're a veteran, you go to the top, if, if you're minimally qualified, you go to the top of the list.
Yes, for veterans.
Okay, well.
For some positions.
Right, for some positions, I think that's partly because it's veterans, partly because they are already employee and.
Really?
Yes.
You're talking about what?
Astronomers, for instance.
Oh.
I mean, so.
Yeah, okay.
So, um, anyway.
But, so we're looking at that, town council's looking at.
So if we don't have that preference, I don't wanna have it foisted on me either.
Yeah, gotcha.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah, well, certainly discussion we should have.
What, another thing I think we should do, you know, much like this veterans' agent position, is, you know, Linda brought up regionalization of the board of health, and then she quickly backed up it, right? I, you know, and, I mean, while I appreciate her opinion, I think we should still look into it, you know, and not just for board of health, but for other.
Regionalization, I think is, is key, because it's already coming up in a lot of this kitchen conversations as well.
Yeah, and, and, I mean, I really think that, you know, we can save some money that way, you know, as long as we don't cut, um, you know, cut services, right? So, like, we talked about it with dispatchers, right?
Yes.
And obviously, you know, the chiefs were, were very vocal, um, about how important a local dispatcher that knows the area is, right? And, you know, and while I, I certainly appreciate their opinion, is that actually the case? Or is that just, you know, kind of their mindset, right? And I, I, I have no idea.
Yeah.
Um, and I'm not pretending to know, but also same with the board of health, you know, is, is the board of health really that busy where somebody is needed here on a daily basis, you know, or can we have somebody?
For that function.
Right, for certain functions, right, or we have somebody in twice a week, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
It's, I mean, because that's hundreds of thousands of dollars, right, a year.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, if you start chipping away at a couple of departments. You know, and then, you know, you, like Tim says, you know, Priscilla picks up this, Priscilla picks, maybe we need to, you know, increase staff in that area, right, even if it's a part-time person. You know, I, I, I think, um, you know, we need to, so there was the, you know, the, um, the, uh, report that came out, what was that now, how many years ago? With all the, the staffing and grading and all of that.
Oh, yeah, we need to.
That was forever ago.
Right, but, but also, too, I think that just looked at wages and classifications, not, you know, not the larger picture. Um, you know, I'm not saying we need a report or a study or any of that, I think, you know, we can, you know, do a lot of the legwork, Tim. Just in terms of, well, like, we looked at it with the housing authority, right? We looked at regionalization, and I think, you know, if we truly had a need, regionalization is, is what makes sense, right?
Absolutely.
Um, and, uh, you know, there, there are ways that, you know, we can't have it all. I mean, you know, it is Carlisle, and our taxes are.
Hmm, yes.
But, you know, we can't have it all, um, so.
It would be actually interesting to, you know, this isn't actually meant for serious discussion, but actually, take a look at, if the budget keeps growing at its current rate, what does that mean? You know?
Over time.
When, when do things kind of break?
Right.
Well, and eventually, growth is gonna stop, right? Because the, the lots are getting used up.
Well, unless we resign, yeah, for densing, densification. So, yeah, we have a lot of things that, and, you know, yeah. We, I think it's good for us to keep on having chances to do these kind of free.
Open-ended, yeah.
Open-ended discussions, we may not make decisions, but first of all, it helps us to know where we, where we stand on things, and, but, um, we're, we don't have enough time sometimes to, to.
It's just, two, two percent, when I first started on the board, was a very different number than two percent is now.
Yeah, yeah.
But, but it seems like it's the same number.
Yeah, right, right.
But it's not.
No, because it's two percent of more.
Well, exactly, but, you know, that's the point, right?
Yeah, because it's compounding.
But in people's minds, it seems like, well, but it was two percent, you know?
Yeah, well, that's.
Yeah.
Because they're looking at the other end of the telescope, you know?
Right.
They're looking from inside the telescope, from.
This is why I've just been such a budget hawk this year, and saying, no, 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 no.
Well, it has made people still, we, I mean, because those fees needed to be reevaluated, they had no incentive to reevaluate those fees until we said no. And then suddenly, I thought it was a wonderful idea to relook at those fees and maybe cover some of their, the time and expenses that those things are costing us.
Which, which makes sense within reason.
It does, I'm, within reason, I totally agree with you, but at least it's to offset some stuff for us. All right, discussion of hiring policy, so we will come back to that. Uh, I'd like to put that, probably not next agenda, because, but the one after that.
Yeah, maybe the one after that.
Yeah, okay. Um, liaison reports?
I can, I can go and say that, you know, I did attend long-term capital requirements yesterday, it was before FinCon, I stayed for FinCon for a little while, but not too long. We heard from, no decisions were made, um, but we heard from, uh, G. Soros, um, the, um, the fire department requests, and, uh, we heard, um, from the school committee on, uh, the, the school requests. Again, no decisions were made at all, um, it was really just kind of the first go-through of, um, hearing about it. Um, so the school has the eighty thousand for technology, um, we did talk, um, about what kind of makes sense as far as, you know, of those items, what items really do meet the requirement for being, a, a long-term capital requirements, and, and I believe that this answer there was they were gonna come back with more information on that. Um, there was discussion about, uh, a, a new tractor, um, that they want, the current, what.
For the school?
For the school, um, they have two, one we just replaced a few years ago, the other one's nineteen eighty-seven. There was, there was some.
I haven't seen the new one yet, all I see is the old one.
There was some, you know, I, I had some questions about the tractor that they were gonna get back to us on. There's a very scary future number for HVAC, um, but there, that's not gonna be discussed this time. I forget actually what the other ones are.
They, they, at one point, they, um, wanted carpeting various places.
Uh, uh, Simplex Fire Alarm, kind of a phase two for that, um, they did, they did do, uh, they knew that they needed both phases, they just requested the first phase, and now, now they're requesting the second phase. So their, their total, it, with the full eighty thousand, is like, is, uh, a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars.
And that is not included in their two and a half percent?
No. No.
So, you added that to the two and a half percent, what does that make it?
And then, um, you know, for the fire department, again, we had a lot of questions, um, there were a lot of things in there that, um, were more facilities related, so we just tabled them. But the ones that were kind of more directly related to just the department was, you know, potentially like, um, uh, heaters for just for the heater bay, for the bays there, um, that I think would be more portable. Uh, a trailer, um, that they can keep the boat in, right now, they're just using.
Oh, dear God.
Brian's, right now, they're just using Brian's personal one. It is the trailer that would be the, um, the UTE, the UT, the four-wheeler that they would like to get at some point in time, this is the trailer that's part of that. So then I don't know what happens to the boat. And, uh, and some other equipment that, um, I, I don't have the spreadsheet in front of me, what they were asking.
Can I ask you, they last year got money to buy a new washer and an extractor, uh, from.
Yeah, so we talked about this, and so, um, the, the washer, um, uh, you mean the washing machines?
The washing machine, yes.
Right, so, um, they, they did get money for washing machines and dryers, they actually got a grant, um, but the grant covered washing machines, not the dryers, and not the hookups, so there's extra money there. They also, um, had money for, um, equipment racks, and, um, Brian has really been connecting with the other fire department area, uh, in the area, he got some, uh, uh, some air tanks for free from Lincoln, I think it is, and he got the equipment rack from.
Another town.
I think it was Acton, um, and so we didn't have to buy that. Um, and so then there's that money, and of course, these, these, these things come in specific. And so my question was, well, what happens? You know, so that money, that money goes.
That's my question.
That money goes into the general fund, right? But it seems to me like, uh, and I, and I don't know how this works, um, and, and Kim was saying it'd be very hard to do, but, um, if we've raised the money for a capital item, and then we don't do it for some reason, the money shouldn't just go back into the general fund, because the next year, we're raising money for more capital items. It should be targeted as, okay. It should be targeted as, okay, here's, here's our long-term capital request for this year. We're gonna reduce it by this amount of money.
Yes.
And, and I'm not saying count the pennies, but.
No, absolutely, I totally agree with you.
You know, some, I think we just need to figure out some way of doing that because the budget's just going up and up and up. And, you know, what, what they were saying was, well, it's okay because we use that free cash to bring the budget down. And, and that was kind of an eye-opener for me because I was always thinking, all right, well, we're using this money that's free cash because, you know, maybe, you know, I'd always kind of envisioned it as, oh, maybe, maybe growth was bigger than we thought it was. Or maybe there was a windfall from a, from a tax-taking or something like that, which are the ones we always talk about. I hadn't realized that that free cash was also all these other things that we then never did. And so now I'm much more inclined to spend the free cash, cash to bring the, the budget down because we probably just earned it last year for budgeting for things that we didn't really need.
Yeah, so, and that's what I was gonna tell you.
Or the things that.
But I think getting.
The things it was appropriated for, they got funded some other way.
Right, yes, so got for free, yeah.
Getting back to what we were talking about before is kind of like having a, a view into the budget. It would be very interesting to know when we have free cash, where did it come from?
Yes, well, that's part of that, yes, exactly, that's part of that.
Yeah, I don't think that's gonna be in that report, but is there a way that we could get that, Tim?
We could, the year-end report shows every department, whether they finished with a surplus or a deficit. And usually the, it generates a free cash or, you know, the insurance, health insurance budget or something that was, you know, maybe, you know, conservatively budgeted. And then there's a couple hundred thousand dollars that rolls to free cash at the end of the year. That's normally how it's created, or a windfall, you know.
This would also include, this wouldn't just be operating budget. This would also include like long-term capital items that were budgeted and just rolled in because they weren't purchased, right?
Like, I think the capital ones, until they're clawed back by town meeting, I think they just kind of stay in those accounts, unless there's, there's a specific date.
When they are clawed, when they, is that right?
Yeah, unless.
That's right.
Because I was suggesting that it actually, you know, it, it, that, that we, you know, the next year's warrant article actually says, we wanna reallocate what you voted for this, to do this. And they were saying, well, no, that would be way too much.
We've been putting kind of expiration dates in the capital, past several years that, you know, it's good for three years and then it just kind of.
Then it just goes into free cash. So it'd be, it would be good to know, hey, that hundred thousand dollars came from appropriation for capital.
Yeah.
So I guess the question is, if this is for three years, do we not claw it back for, until three years from now?
Right.
Okay.
Right.
So that will go into free cash three years from now?
Right, and, and it's just, I think it's just important to know where the free cash is coming from.
I agree with you.
In general terms, yeah.
In general terms.
But it, it would typically just come from the general operating budget, right? Because like the police station, for example, didn't have, right? That's a hundred, eight hundred and some odd thousand, right? Was that, or was it one point two?
I forget. But that's the case, that's the case where we just don't borrow the money.
Right, exactly, so we don't, so that doesn't go into free cash, we just don't bond.
Right.
So there's gotta be some sort of specific type of.
Actually, something that we.
Revenues, yeah.
We, something that we're asking the taxpayer to pay for.
Right, right, but, but it's gotta be something that's already in the budget, right? And it's not something we would normally bond, right?
Right, the bond things, I think, are totally out, off the table here.
No, they are, right, right, right. But yeah, no, I just, okay, yeah, so it's not like we're gonna have eight hundred and some odd thousand dollars in three years because we never borrow them.
Yeah, right, right. I'd be willing to bet we're talking.
But we, but we budgeted.
Fifty thousand or more a year?
No, probably, yeah. Well, I think a lot of it is the, you know, because you return it money every year, right?
Right.
And I think, you know, I think, you know, the fire department did, even though that was a different story. You know, I think a lot of departments return something, you know? David said that he always returned something, you know, and, which is great, you know, as long as we're not cutting services. But, but yeah, it'd be nice to know because then, part of it too is, you know, maybe, and we talked about this with the fire department for years, make it the budget more appropriate. And then, you know, if you overspend, much like Gary does with Snow or whatnot, if you overspend, we'll just pay it to you next year at town meeting, you know what I mean? As opposed to, you know, just getting it back, right? But then I guess it goes into free cash.
Yeah, but, yeah, it's, I mean, I love the whole concept of free cash, but it is money we've raised from the taxpayer. It's not actually free.
No, exactly, right?
Yeah, no, right.
And it's accounted for in the budget.
Right, right, and I think, you know, if somebody has extra money in their budget, they're a little more likely, if they got twenty-five thousand and it's coming into June, then, oh, well, I can get this or I can get.
Right, spend it because they don't wanna.
Right, and it's not necessarily huge money, but, you know, if one department spends five grand, another one spends ten, you know, it adds up across.
Next thing you know, you got real, real money.
I mean, do we ever get money back from the school, though? You know, and, and I'm not saying that they necessarily have to, but, but.
No, we did get money back once, we got thirty thousand back from one year, about four years ago.
Wow, surprising.
I didn't mean to derail us.
No, it's, no, it's again, these are all the things that we're all wrestling with. And, and all we hear about is taxes and how much taxes and, and we're trying to continue to give good service without raising the tax. And I, I actually kind of believe we have the money and our, we've already raised enough money, we just have to reallocate it in order to make it more equitable, you know? And then everybody will be happy. I don't think this, we don't have to make the schools unhappy, but maybe just not quite as happy as they are, you know?
And also too, you know, just sit down and have them take a, a little look at, at their budget, just a little tighter look, you know? Instead of replacing iPads every four years, maybe, for three years, maybe you replace them every four. You know, and just see where that gets you, you know? And you're saying, oh, well, you know, if something breaks and we have to replace it, blah, blah, blah. Yeah, but you know what, it's, it's called tightening the belt a little bit, you know, and it's just, it's.
Well, there's, the other part is sharing some of the services that they have. They have a full-time IT plus person, right? One plus person, as far as I understand, so it's not just one. So, and we could use some help on IT. So, I mean, are they really, you know, needed that much? Could they not give us some help, you know, when we need it as well?
And it may be that they can, maybe not all the time.
So that we don't have to hire an IT person when there's one right here, you know, in town? So I think there would be some, it would be nice if we could be more cooperative with one another about service, some services. Regionalize, you know, we don't have to regionalize within a town, let's regionalize with our own school, you know? Right?
Yeah, no, I, I mean, I think, yeah, I, I think there are ways to cut and be creative.
Yeah. I agree.
But it's not gonna happen overnight. I mean, I think it's, you know, the problem is it takes a lot of time to research and stuff too. I mean, you know, Nathan researched a lot of the housing stuff and he spent the better part of a year, you know, really getting.
The Housing Authority? That's two years.
Yeah, yeah, you know, so I mean, it's a, it's a significant amount of time, right? And then, and then there's the hurdle if you actually want to try to implement it.
Yeah, well, I think, well, of course, that's the other thing, it's not quite done yet either because we still have a final thing from the state on that.
Oh, no, but I'm just saying, you know, like if we, if we wanted to regionalize the Board of Health, right?
Right, yes.
We're gonna get pushback.
Oh, yeah.
You know, and, and I mean, ultimately, it's still, you know, not necessarily our decision, but, yeah. Because something like Edwards Select, maybe. But, but yeah, you're gonna get significant pushback, right? People are, oh, well, what if my septic fails, what if I need the Board of Health to fail? You know, it's that, getting over that initial fear.
And what do you say?
And what, yeah, it's, what do you say?
Ask Ellen. Ellen says.
Yeah, all right. Um, I think we're, we're, oh my God, we're fifteen minutes off.
Oh, jeez.
Do I see, hear?
I move for adjournment.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.